It is 9:01 a.m. and I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Secretary Creo, if you could call roll.
Are you really? Okay, sorry. Commissioner Obin Shane. Commissioner Obin Shane, is he online? No, okay. And Commissioner Venus? Here. Commissioner Taylor? Here. Vice Chair Gibson?
Here.
Chair Burt?
Here.
Creo's here. And Commissioner Beck?
Here.
Commissioner Ingham?
Here.
And Commissioner Klosasilich?
Here.
We have eight people present.
You know, Commissioner Obin Shane had texted saying he'd be, he'd be here soon. He just got, there's a wreck on I-25, yeah. Oh, good job. Good job. All right, but, which is great because our first item, Commissioner Ingham, discussion of the Public School Capital Outlay Council Agenda Items, the lease reimbursement rates. Is it right to pass it over to you? Thank you, sir. Well, that's okay. What I was planning on doing is just having him introduce it and then we'll... And we do have, yep, we have Commissioner Obin Shane here now.
After the show, Commissioner Obin Shane is present.
Big timing. All right, if you could go ahead and introduce us to this item.
Okay, well, good morning, everybody. Well, I got it on. Okay, I'm always, okay, I gotta be closer for this one. All right. Well, so this is an issue I've been messing with and feel pretty confident. I'm just gonna say that I, I, I understand it pretty well. It was brought to the PSCOC in November last year with a recommendation that there would be no increase. And I, I voted against, I, I made comment and then voted against it, but it was already a motion that was quickly passed. Okay, so after that, that led me to a bunch of other things going on. So I can restrict this to the lease reimbursement portion, or I can expand it to the issues that I have in, in general with PSCOC.
I would say, so if there's anything that's part of the general that affects this particular thing, go for it. Otherwise, I would say stick to that. And then when we get to your update for PSCOC later this afternoon, bring up all the other issues.
Okay, so the handout I gave you guys has both, both sides of that situation. So the, the way it's set up is there's a, there's the two statutes and the, and then my comments after those statutes. So the first section on the first page is more the other issue, the capital funding access for charter schools, which is a big deal for me right now. Okay, the second part where it starts with the 22-24-4 is the capital outlay fund created. So that, that's the first section of this that is at issue for me. And I saw that the whole statute is, is in the drive. This is just the points that I think were really important to me. And so let me just read that first part. It says, "The fund shall be expended annually by the council for grants to school districts for the purpose of making lease payments for facilities, including facilities leased to charters, leased for charter schools." Then there's some other, some stuff in the middle. "The following criteria shall apply to the grants." And so the number one thing was the amount of a grant to a school district or charter school shall not exceed. Okay, so what's really important is that shall not exceed. Okay, so then the, the A subparaphrase is the annual lease payments for leasing the facility. And then what's really important is the after that. Okay, so my issue with this is that, that, that shall not exceed with the colon after it is really problematic. And it doesn't make any sense, even from what I've talked to people all over, that it, it doesn't really make sense. That really, that shall not exceed really was meant to address the first issue. So that it's very obvious that we don't want to pay anything more than what the actual lease is. But then when you put the after that subparaphrase, whatever, and then you go to the next paragraph, E, which is the amount of the lease reimbursement and the fact that it was, and, and if you notice, this is all a shalls here. Okay, well, so what's happened is they do it every year, calculate the lease reimbursement would be if it was increased by the CPI every year. Unfortunately, they take that shall not exceed to address both of these paragraphs. And then they say, okay, we're gonna figure out what it is, but then we're gonna win what we want. And, and unless we see a need, or a need is addressed to us, we don't see any problem with keeping it the same. So they kept it, kept it at $700 for many years. And then I think Dave Robbins was kind of instrumental in getting it pushed up to $815 probably four or five years ago. So when I, when I argued about it, I didn't know all this language. I did, wasn't really clear on this. And so this time, I feel like I'm really gonna challenge this, this interpretation. And PSFA called me, I mean, I talked to the director and the, and their, and their council, and they, you know, justified their interpretation. And I also have, if anybody's interested, the, the motion from that meeting in November. And it's very clear, they several times reiterate, shall not exceed, shall not exceed, you know. Any case, so it's clear to me that that's, they're just not doing what they need to do. And they're, they're, they're shorting charter schools. So it's my intent to make that really clear to them. And one of the things I really is to have before the, it's not the next meeting, but I, I think I, we did a little bit of public comment this time, meeting yesterday. That was just soda. But then I believe in the next couple of meetings, we need to have charter schools come up and make public comment. And also ask that, that we could, because in the last meeting, I asked them, the, the chair, can I bring some charter school leaders to come up? Because the justification is nobody asked us to increase it. So I would like to have some charter school leaders come up and make the case that they need to be, that it needs to be increased to that level. He, he, I asked him privately, then I asked him during the meeting, and I did not get a positive response. So I, I'm, he, he talked to me afterwards. He wants me to refine what my request is and then make another request. Well, it's pretty clear to me, what I need to do is get closer to the November date and then have charter schools come up. And I'm gonna request for like the October meeting to have that time for charter schools and justify just this. Because what he's saying is I'm, I'm attacking too many questions and that I need to just deal with what the, what the council can accomplish. They can easily accomplish this. All they have to do is decide to do it. And I think they're, they're pretty much, I, I think that would be a positive thing. I, I, I don't think I'll get the level of resistance I got last time. And so, but I do want to make sure they understand that the charter schools need this, this increase in the lease reimbursement. So I will encourage some participants, if anybody wants to come for public comment the next meeting, that would be great. If, if we need, after that, at probably the next meeting, I'll ask again for the opportunity to have a formal, where we don't have to just do public comment in two, two minutes, but a, a presentation by the, I mean, maybe PCS and M, a couple of charter schools, just so they understand that this is absolutely necessary. And I do believe most of the council members are new. There is, you know, not very many that even started when I started. So they don't really know, and, and I think they need to see. And, but unfortunately, I think they need to see the other part, too, the inequity with the capital outlay process that excludes charter schools. So I'm, I'm addressing two different issues, but this is what I plan to do for the next, the next few meetings at the PSCOC. And is that a good enough explanation?
So what I'm gonna ask, so we'll, what commissioners ask questions. And while we're doing that, this will be for you, Lucy. I'm gonna ask anybody who's online, who would like to jump into this, to have a, that has any kind of comment on this topic that's in the virtual audience. If you can raise your digital hand, we'll start pulling you into the panel. If you can make them panelists, to make sure they can turn on their cameras as well. We'll let folks start coming in. And if any commissioners have questions while we're doing that, let me know. And I also know Ms. Barnes has been looking into this as well. So I, I think if there's any kind of like legal question, I think Ms. Barnes is also there. Is there anyone, is there anyone in CSD who's like working with you on this? Or is it Ms. Barnes that's primarily gonna, your support? Okay, yeah, everybody now, okay. So if any commissioner has any question, well, I, I'm sure there's a plethora of people involved that can hopefully help answer.
Patty? I guess my question is, I can remember when I was first on commission, there were calls, you need to, you need to show up because we're talking about lease reimbursement and people need to be there, we need comment. And then that kind of like all went away. It's been silent for a very long time. So my question is, have, I know you, you say, they say that schools haven't been asking. But my question is, have, have schools actually been asking for the increase and they've been ignored? Or have they actually been silent? And if that's the case, I guess I wonder why? Because this is
I, I think
huge, I mean, this is large, significant sums of money to schools budgets.
I think it's a question of biting the hand that feeds you.
Okay, yeah, well.
I'm afraid, I know that in all sorts of environments, if you're getting, you know, where you get your, your funding from to go and be too adamant about it is difficult because you're biting the hand that feeds you. That gives me the unique position because they're not feeding me. I, I can bite them as much as I want to.
Right.
But I don't want to be that person that I, I'm so aggressive about it that I get ignored. So I, I gotta walk that tightrope.
Right, right.
All right, I'm gonna go, Ms. Fox. If you have anything, you have more than
Yeah, hi, everybody. Good morning. I just, I wanna thank Commissioner Ingram to, for his support on this issue. Frankly, I think Patty Matthews is also on, and she and I were speaking yesterday. And we're actually surprised that this wasn't something that we were all over last year or any other previous year. But regardless of whether or not anyone has asked for it, I guess the statute just basically says that if you're going to use the 700 per mem, it's required that it be adjusted every year by the CPI. So there shouldn't need to be a specific ask, but to the extent that now going forward, we do need to show some sort of solidarity or, you know, common purpose in making the ask going forward, we, we certainly can marshal those forces, I believe, through PCS and M and, and through Patty and my clients, Dan Hills as well. So there's substantial, obviously, substantial-ish interest on, on the part of the charter schools now that this has been brought to their attention, so.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Matthews?
Yes, I, you know, I do, I do wanna go back and look at the physical impact reports. And I know we don't have legislative history, but the physical impact reports are important. But if you scroll all the way down, members of the commission, and again, I do wanna thank Commissioner Ingram as well because I agree with Sue, this would have been something, I wish someone who'd have been there on behalf of the charter schools would have brought up sooner, but anyway, not, not you, Ms. Commissioner Ingram. But if you scroll down to the annotations of this bill, which you should see on the document Commissioner Ingram provided, this was an amendment in 2024. And you see where they say that in 2024, it made it mandatory, when it was previously discretionary for the Capital Outlay Council to provide grants to school districts from the outlay for, for lease assistance. So I agree with Commissioner Ingram that the tagline for not in excess was clearly meant to be, you're not gonna get more money from your lease than you're actually paying. But the other part of that was not intended to be discretionary. And so I wanna go back and look at those. But I think to, to your point, Commissioner Gibson, I think the charter schools thought this was a done deal. And I, I don't see a member of the commission, or public charter schools of New Mexico present. But I believe that was something that was pushed in that bill. And the point was that the schools shouldn't have to go back. It would have been an automatic CPI adjustment. So I think we're, we're kind of getting the fallout from poorly drafted legislation, surprise, surprise. But I don't believe it was intended that the 700 per mem, as long as you didn't go over your actual lease payment, was discretionary. That was, that would have meant that the statutory change was, was pointless. Because it, it was already discretionary and that was the problem. So I don't, I don't understand why the charter schools should have to go and ask for the money when it is clearly in the statute that they were supposed to. And I think the Capital Outlay Council was taking advantage of poorly drafted legislation. But they know what it was, that, that amendment wasn't, that was last, it was effective last July. They know what it meant. And I'm, I'm with Commissioner Ingram. This really, we need to push back. And frankly, they, they've admitted that the CPI adjustment would put the schools at 1022 per mem. They've admitted to that. And so I think it, that's a lot of money. And I represent MOS, the Montessori Academy, and Explore Schools, some of the Explore Schools, and that's all a huge chunk of kiddos and a huge chunk of money that they've been denied just at the whim of the Capital Outlay Council's, you know, misinterpretation of statute.
And really quick before, before you go back, I want, one of the questions I wonder, too, is if this does, and, and thank you, Commissioner Ingham, for real, for, for seeing it, for clocking it and bringing it up. Because I remember you talking to me about this, and it's hard in my head versus like on paper. So once again, this is, I'm very grateful for this. If, if, if this comes to light, that there was, you know, let's say they, moving forward, we are able to come together as a, as a charter school sector, get this to where it's, it's righted in the future, what about the past? And all the money that the schools have been putting out of their general fund that they shouldn't have, is, do you know, I mean, that, that may be too wonky. Maybe that's Julia, that can, but I don't know, I don't know how that necessarily, because like for, from what it looks like is if they do agree that, oh, yeah, okay, that's correct, and we're gonna go and do it moving forward. Is there any, is there any, I don't know how it could possibly work for going backwards, too.
Okay, so I wanna respond to a couple of things. One, from our councils and with, with all of you guys, Susan, Patty, and, and Julia, I would love a, for me, I feel like I'm, I feel very inadequate for this, this deal, okay? And, and I am challenging legalese, and I don't feel at the, really competent to do that. But I feel like pretty clear, the intent of the legislation is there. But, but how that colon and where it's placed and where that other colon, semicolon, with the or, how that really, really means, I don't know. And so if you guys would look at that and do a, get an understanding of, did they actually, I mean, I know before the amendment, when they, they changed the original made to a shall. That was at the, the first part of the, of the deal. That left it open, but I, to me, even that was like, they had the option of doing it or not doing it. They didn't have the option of doing it less than what they should have done in my, in my, my reading of it. But again, I'm really a novice. So I, I would love analysis from anybody else that wants to, to speak to that. Because I've asked several people, and I, I feel like the, the responses I've gotten are all, they agree with me. And I don't want, I really don't want people to just agree with me. I want people to challenge me so I, so I can know, when I go to challenge the council with this and PSFA, I wanna be on very strong footing. As far as asking for it to, I have questioned myself with that as far as asking for recompense. My, my nature is, yeah, I wanna go after that. Is it prudent? I don't know. I don't know. The, the other thing that I wanted to bring up, and, and this ties to the other big old issue that I've been chasing for a while is that, that federal Department of Education grant. Well, it turns out that that grant is specifically appropriate for this. Now, this could be the carrot, I mean, I'm ready to smack the council. But this could be the carrot to, because what it will do, the council makes a specific incre, increase, the, the state makes an increase, a, a per student increase to charter schools. That's exactly what that thing, and what it would do would be reimburse the state for that increase, starting the first year with most of it and then seeding years. So it would kind of soften the blow to the state.
So I do have a question about that.
Okay.
And I, I understand that, but are we, are, do we know that that grant is moving forward?
No.
That's the, that's
We, we don't
The, the, I think the current grant ends now?
Well, the, okay, so, yes, the, the current grant ended already.
Yeah.
Okay, and the grant before, the year before, that I was all hair on fire about, that was hinged on what in, and I was completely deluded about what that grant, what was gonna work. But my conversations with Jim Griffin have been very really helpful. And so reality is, he helped craft that, that grant. And so he said, this specifically applies to us. Unfortunately, they, the, in the past, the grant has been put out every five years. But this year, they chose to do the grant again because of the new administration.
Right.
Okay, and their intent on, on pushing school choice and charter schools. And what Jim said was, he feels like it's a pretty good bet that they will, they will do it again. And that, especially if there are applicants out there. And what he said was, for us, this year would have been unfortunate because Texas and Ohio had ready applications. They were gonna eat up the entire grant. Next year, it's like us in Louisiana. And so if we are, if we can get that, and, and there's a lot of, I, I'm not sure it's worth it because it's gonna take, we're gonna have to find a person to make the application, the, we have to kind of jockey the, the deal where, where the state can show that it's, it's doing this contingent on getting this grant, kind of, but not really. This is, this is the problem. The, the grant is kind of, but it might be a, a, an option to throw out to them, to encourage them to do this. I don't believe it should be a problem. I know how much money we have as the council, that we are, we, we are spending a lot, a lot of money. And this would probably be $5 million of lease reimbursement. That in, in our, in our budget in, over there, that's like, uh, uh, intense. And so I, I know, it just should be, there, there, I, I don't think they can argue with us about it. I think if we present it to the council, everybody in the council understands there's gonna be some resistance from some, but not too many at this point. I really don't think. And I think it's, it would be very difficult for them to say no. And say, because I'm gonna put it to them like, in, in the end, depending on the, the level of, that, that we need to be, how, how, I, I'm gonna put it to them that, you know, reality here is, you're gonna have to say that you don't think it's reasonable to treat charter schools equitably with this.
But technically, the process would have to be that they would have to agree to allow us to hire someone to write the grant for them because it's, it's them that'll, that would hold the grant. Because we can't hold a grant. So they would, technically, they would have to be the applicant for it, correct?
No, I don't believe so. Not, not, well, I, from what Jim said, any number of parties could do it. PED could do it.
Well, let
Anybody could do it. In fact, well, yeah, no, I'm saying CSD could do it, PCS
No, they can't because that's PED. Yes, but it, it would still be PED that would, that would be, I
Okay, so, so reality is, let's not get lost on, I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not so adamant about that anymore because I feel like the reality here is, I, I wanna make the case so adamantly that they're not, it is gonna need a carrot, okay?
There has to, to me, there has to be the, there has to be someone who's saying, I'm gonna do the grant. Otherwise, they're, they're gonna be, they're, to me, their, their best responses, well, you don't have anyone that's gonna apply for the grant, so we're not guaranteeing
And, and that
that this is gonna go through. So someone has to be set in place to do the grant. So that they're clear that the grant is a, a, a real, real possibility. Not just, oh, we're gonna find someone to do it.
Okay, so I, I, I agree. Jim said he would come up with a person that could really do the, a good job of writing the application. And he was not concerned about, at all, about who would do it. He said it would be relatively easy to get done. It would afford the state the money. But regardless, this is, this is, that's a, I, I just brought it up because there, that's a possibility to encourage this. But for, for my, my perspective right now, that is a, a possibility, but not, not anything that I'm, I'm determined to do. I'm determined to get the lease reimbursement increased. I, I'm not gonna be, I, I, you know, that, that, I just feel like it is my, my challenge right now. And I do believe the council will be receptive to it, okay? I don't think, I don't think we'll get the grief that we've gotten in the past. In fact, I think it'll just roll over. Because they all have seen, seen my reaction, and they don't wanna see any more of that.
Valerie, I saw you raise your hand. I know you put it down, but if you wanna come on and speak.
Good morning, Commissioner. Sorry, I don't have my camera on, I'm on the move. But I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that PCS and M is aware of the problem, and Matt's on his way to another meeting. And he, he, as Patty was saying, this is the first year since the 2024 passage of that House Bill 63 that the PSCOC has not provided the increase. So we received late notice that there was a problem this year. And, but the statute, as said, is clear, and we expect that the PSCOC is gonna adhere to it. And Matt is currently reaching out to members of the awards committee. And what's left of the PSFA staff to get this remedied this fall is that PSFA staff has also had a lot of turnover, and they're scrambling at the moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Creo?
First, thank you, Commissioner Ingram, for just your, the diligence, your diligence, your resilience, your sense of fight on behalf of what's right. And really zeroing in on this issue, I think, I think we're all just super appreciative of that. So let's say we are, the, the state gets the grant. What ensures that that is used specifically for what we want it to be used for?
The grant language.
The language of the grant, so they can, okay. The language of the grant, so they can, okay. I just don't always trust. Okay, okay.
Federal grants are very explicit.
Okay, thank you.
So Commissioner Ingram, one thing I'm, that I thought we we could do today to support is definitely to write a letter on behalf of the commission. Um, and maybe if we can ask Ms. Barnes to draft it for us on behalf of us. Um, but I think like a letter to PSC OC specifically about the the MEM rate. Not, nothing else yet, just that MEM rate that we support, like, it's not just you, but it's all of us. You have the leverage behind you and and I would interest Ms. Barnes to be able to, you know, be specific as far as like exactly pinpointing, you know, what the issue is, and this is what we think our, the solution should be, what we, what solution we would support. Um, I still think, I mean, I I I know, I don't know the exact amount of the funds in PSC OC, but I'm I I vaguely aware it's, it's a good amount of funds in there. Um, so I also, I mean, I don't know if it's, I feel like going backwards is only fair. You know, if schools were shorted year over year over year. To me, that seems like a logical next step, like, okay, there's this error happening. This is what we think the error is, this is what we think the resolution to the error is. And we think this error has been happening. And schools have been, and I I just don't know if, you you knowing the funding situation better inside there, like, i- if they have funds sitting there.
Well, they reverted, they reverted two and a half million la- last year, bec- well, no, the the the, well, the the deal is, is they they put in the budget 25 million and they only spent
Right.
the 22 million.
Got it.
22 and a half, so so they didn't, okay, they just.
But that reverts, that reverts if they don't spend it all? It doesn't.
No, it's it's it it, they didn't spend it all, they they spent everything they were required to spend. It was just an accounting deal to bring back that, they just put a big number in and then and then revert it back. But but, um, I think it's incumbent on us, if we want to, if we want to play with this issue, to write the letter and and say maybe at the way the letters could be written is that, look, this is, we we feel like this is a serious issue that has been a systemic problem and has been misrepresented or 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 misinterpreted. And that, um, at least we need to have this resolved this year. And we want to reserve the right to, because I got a feeling you'll have to sue them for that. Uh, but I don't think that that's, I don't, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't preclude that. It might be worth it, I mean, it probably would be worth it.
Maybe just putting in there, we would also like to encourage the council to review previous years and determine if compensatory reaction is is deserved as well.
So.
And let them decide, like, let them take a look, like, if you agree to this now, take a look instead of.
To 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 speak to that, I would prefer the legal people in the room to to lo- look at at that, that possibility. I, right now, I have a kind of single focus theme.
This fall.
Yeah, this this has got to be resolved this in November, and I wa- I I want to, I just want to make sure that happens.
Okay.
I'm equally as anxious about the other stuff. And so we really do need to address that.
Okay, I see it. Um, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. or Commissioner Ingram, I want to make sure I understand because I think this, the Capital Outlet Council have an align item whereby they've calculated the available, the potential funding for these awards. And they've based that on an actual 700 per MEM calculated up through CPI adjustments over the years. But then at the November meeting, they approve these grants and then they go, oh, well, we were decided we weren't going to give them any more than last year. So whatever we had budgeted for that particular fund goes back to the general fund of the PSC OC. Is that correct, or am I misunderstanding how they set aside as part of their budget how much goes to this lease reimbursement? Because it seems to me a bit of an admission, if they calculate for their budgets the amount of money, um, based on the statutory interpretation that the 700 with the CPI adjustment is mandatory, and then they just sort of arbitrarily changed their mind at the meeting.
Um.
Is that, is that correct?
Well, I I have the Jermaine here, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, Jermaine is this, the motion that we made in November, okay? And and what it said is the council, the, let me read you the motion. Council approval to adjust the MEM rate for 2023 Consumer Price Index for the United States. All items at 3.4%. Then in parentheses, not to exceed amount, okay? Then determine the PSC rate per MEM to calculate the lease assistance awards. Approval of the lease assistance award recommendations as specified in accompanying spreadsheet entitled blah, blah, blah. To 107 charter charter and district school applicants in the amount of two, 22,200, uh, 771,300. This overall scenario represents a discretionary 10% increase in the PSC OC discretionary rate per MEM. But then they they go through the whole thing, they actually calculate, they show how much it would be in the in the, and I, you you might have put that that one, so you can see there was the the the, um, oh, I don't know if you got this one. So basically, the potential lease reimbursement would would and the potential total award would be. So if they had increased it to last year, the award would be 27,887,000. So it's basically $5 million of increase had they increased it to that. To your reference of how much money we spend, it is a staggering amount. Our our rolling budget right now is $1.8 billion. Uh, you should see that just the waivers we hand out to schools. Okay, the waivers we hand out, incredible. So anyway, um, yeah, I would, I would encourage, I maybe what I'll do is have them put this this motion sheet with this information and put it into the drive somehow so all, everybody can access this. It's public information, this is not not anything secret. And so, um, it is what we agreed to last time. Again, what what PSFA made this recommendation. I don't know why they were adamant to do that. I have my suspicions, but I I can't say. But that's what the awards committee got. They didn't, they didn't hear from anybody, they didn't have anybody resisting it. So they just made a motion to approve it. That's not going to happen next time.
Ms. Barnes, really quick, before I go back to Valerie, um, I saw you mention something about how the PSC OC staff had recommended a 1022 MEM last year, is that correct?
I'm trying to think that the the documents from their meeting materials are 246 pages. Um, they they laid this all out. They laid out what the, what the increase would be, what what, who would qualify, you know? Um, I took information from them, converted it into an Excel spreadsheet, thank you, but um, and so that you could just see what the impact was for state charters. Um, and they, you know, provided a huge amount of information. Um, my recollection, although Commissioner Ingram may may remember more, was that the staff did say, we need to do this. This is non-discretionary, we need to do this. Um, I guess I'd like to hear if Sue and and Patty would would, um, join in. Boy, I am doubting you can go back to a previous year. Um, books are closed out, things are reverted back to the general fund, I am, I would be shocked if there was an ability to go back. I mean, a a lawsuit might do it, but, um, you know, so I and, um, I'd be interested in what Sue and Patty said about that. And then this, the second is the the language goes back to fiscal year 2009. So it requires that the CPI be calculated for a long time. So it's a little bit funky as to where we are, but actually, let me see if Sue and Patty wanted to join in on on an inability to go backwards.
Um, before Patty jumps in, it was our understanding that because the schools were shorted in previous years, that prior to the bill, yes, they were shorted, but after the bill was passed, they went beyond the CPI to make up for that last time.
When would they do that? When did that happen?
In that, in the report that you're referencing, so maybe seeking some clarity on that. And that's.
We'll put this out, so so we'll, so you guys can all review this motion. Because it's, it is probably the most important part of it. But I'm going to say no, the PSFA staff recommended zero. You can see it in the first paragraph on that, what I just handed you, the PS.
Then they they outlined what the.
They absolutely do, they ab- absolutely go through the whole, what it would cost to reimburse it. But their their recommendation was zero, and that was instrumental. And the awards committee just took their recommendation.
Patty and Sue, do you have a thought on going backwards?
I guess my thought, um, Ms. Barnes and members of the commission, I'd want to look at the legislative history of the bill. Because, you know, the way it's worded, yeah, it would seem that's exactly what should happen. But I would say perhaps if you look at the history of the bill and when that 2024 amendment kicked in, um, prior to that time, it could have been interpreted as discretionary. And so, you know, they didn't, they did themselves no great service by leaving that terminology in there, they could have adjusted it. But, I mean, I suppose their argument could be, well, it was amended. Our argument should be in 2024, it was amended to make the CPI mandatory. Prior to that, it was discretionary, and because it was discretionary, you're might be foreclosed from recouping that. But that said, that number to be calculated, if you took it forward, would then set, reset the base number as of this year or this cal- this calendar year would be based on if you calculated forward and we get to your number of 1022 per MEM going forward, that's where we should start. Not, I don't know that you'd have an argument to recover backward. If the intent of the bill was to change it, as we were arguing, to make it mandatory going forward. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Maybe what, instead of making it very clear that we, I mean, I I can say that if we can get it pushed through this year and we get it changed, then that's kind of an admission that they have done it wrong. And then it would be up to the charter school community if they feel like they want to take up a lawsuit. I think that, and so I don't think we need to probably, we need to not make it any more unpalatable than we have to. But in the end, I think that they, we won't meet the resistance we have in the past. And so we should do that. Um, I think we may need to reserve the lawsuit threat to another issue.
Great, I I well, and I I just want to echo for the PEC that works very hard to stay in your lane, that that you do have a lane here and that, um, you know, Commissioner Ingram is one person, but he has been firmly assigned to that commission. Um, and that you could do, you can do a series of things. You can do the letter on behalf of the, uh, the PEC, it's a standing agenda item for you every single month. You know, you were just talking about that, I think you could definitely have a stance that he speaks for the PEC, not just as a member of PSC OC. And then you can have a formal letter. Um, my thinking is that the charter schools, who are the people who are impacted, if you want to talk about legally who has standing, the PEC doesn't have standing, you have a place on that commission. But, you know, Sue and Patty's clients do and other other charter schools, state charter schools do. So I I have seen very frequently that you can have, you know, a letter from you, but also a a letter from the charter school community, however they want to do that, that goes together. Um, and says, please fix this in November. I I just want to go over a couple of other options, I think, in that a lot of entities have, including you. The chair of this commission can request an attorney general's opinion at any time. I I want to say sometimes those can take a really long time to get back, and we all know that. Um, and that sometimes, and I have also seen legislators go, oh, that's just an attorney general. Yes, it is just an attorney general, that's one of the roles. But this commission, if that seemed, that feels a little premature to me. Let's see if they'll fix it, if they won't. But I wouldn't wait too long because like if they don't start to put this issue on an agenda, I don't know their rules of procedure. I mean, obviously, your rules allow any two members to get something put on an agenda. So there's not a person who can shut down what's discussed on this commission. I don't know if that's common, I haven't looked at anybody else. Um, but that, i- if that doesn't happen, I think you have the possibility of an attorney general's opinion. I don't know if charter schools do, I think they may have to go to a legislator, but certainly the chair of the commission does. So that's one of the, that's one of the people that can request that. And then I do think that there's, um, possibilities that charter schools have for litigation, but I don't think that's your role. That's, you're not going to file suit, you you would, you, I don't think you can file suit. So I think, um, Commissioner Ingram should feel like he's not alone in this. I don't think that you have to feel like, you know, you're Don Quixote, you know, out there on your own, because you're actually not. And alone, I think you're not going to be successful, but with all of the people that are involved, you represent one type of interest, but you don't even represent the charter schools on that commission. You you sit there to speak for charter issues, but not for charter schools. Um, so I think the charter community is perfectly capable of deciding how they want to participate in this. But I think that we can do that in in general. I, and I guess the last thing I want to say is I kind of have looked at it like, what would, what would I think if we got a letter from PSC OC on how you guys should act? I think giving them a lot of time before a November meeting to know that this is an issue is respectful. Fair, respectful from one body to another. Because I would tend, I'm just going to say, I would tend to discount it first. I'd be like, who are you and why are you just giving me a letter? Um, but if it was done in a respectful way, I think a lot of that, you know, you've got the chair coming and speaking to you after the meeting. I think that there's a variety of things, even more like two or three of you could go and speak. I'm just telling you, I think you have a range of things. And I think that it is respectful to look at it that way.
So just to make it very like distinct, so we can get like some kind of consensus. Um, but as a commission, we can write a letter to PSC OC just identifying maybe last year where we saw there was a difference in what we believe should be calculated versus what was, and what we would ask that the PSC OC look for this year and what we think would be, on behalf of the commission, not on behalf of schools. And then that way, that gives you the leverage to be like, there's nine people, you know, eight people behind, it's not just me, there's eight people behind me saying this. And if we give it to them within the next month, that gives them several months as they start, as they're doing their calculations, as their staff is doing that, and then, but it really does come down to like that, once the materials come out for the November meeting, that is really when we'll have to take further action.
Yeah, but that that was the problem that happens to me a lot, is that it goes through the awards subcommittee first. And then it, and then they have to process, so we have the the awards and the AMS subcommittees a week before the general meeting. And the the awards subcommittee then makes a judgment, then that PSFA has to process that. And then they issue the workbook for the meeting, and lots of times I get it three days to a week to process 250 pages of, sometimes 350 pages of of documents. And the, so the r- reality was last time I got that and all I had was a weekend. And I really didn't, I I, I had not done all this research. Um, at that time, I could barely talk to it. I had Dave talk to me about how he went to them to increase it in the first time. I had that, and so I spoke. I had that, and so I spoke, okay, to the best of my ability. But in that case, I was by myself. There was no, nobody there to, and that's what they asked, what was the charter schools? Okay, so I, I know that this was something, but this time, I know it's going to happen in November. Okay, so I think, my question is what Julia said about the attorney general's response or, or, or opinion. Is that a two-way sword, Julia? I mean, could he say, no, they're interpreting it right? So, but, but that's, that's why I would love you guys to come back with how you feel, absolutely. Do you think I'm correct? If we are, then I think getting that attorney general's saying this, this legislation was not well-worded, and the clear intent of the legislation was this. And if he can say that.
It might, I, it'd be a, I would roll over if it happened before November.
I, I understand that.
I do think it's, I, I think like what Ms. Barnes said is, let's see if we could just take care of it outside of that. And then if it doesn't go right in November, then get to the.
Okay, so.
An issue where you, you bring it forward, you have all the PEC behind you, you have the charter community step up. Maybe this just gets fixed in November.
I, I think it will, okay, but, but my concern is if it doesn't, it's, it's probably going to require a legislative fix. And then, and then we have to be, I, I've been witnessing the lead time for legislative fixes, especially for a 30-day session. We would have to have it crafted through legislative services in people's hands before the, before this ever starts in order to get that happen. If we wait till November to decide we're going to do that, you're almost too late already. So, so I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not, I don't see a real downside if, if our council and the, the schools councils feel like the interpretation that they're taking is wrong, and the one we have that we're articulating for is right. I think I will go ahead and make that application to the attorney general. So if it comes down to, we got to, for the legislative fix, then, then we have, there's some chance of that attorney general's opinion happening before the session. Not that it will do any good.
Okay. Ms. Matthews?
Madam Chair, thank you. Commissioner Ingham, and, and actually, Ms. Barnes referenced this. And now I'm just like deja vu, I'm like going back really before we even had least reimbursement to these battles with PSCOC over access to capital funding for the schools. But I do recall a time when I asked to be allowed to attend the awards subcommittee meetings, because that's really, as you pointed out, where the, you know, the meat is being made, the sausage is being made. So, and I was told no, because they're not public. And so after some back and forth with PSFA, I think I was eventually let in. But do you know whether or not people can attend those subcommittee meetings?
No, I can't. I tried to do it one time and I got hastily. Because I made a quorum, because I was ignorant, but.
Oh, I see. Okay, that makes sense.
But, but I, I don't know, I think that in, in our AMS meetings, we have never had anybody come and testify. So I don't, I don't know that that could happen or not. I'm going to say we may need to make the argument to PSFA before that motion, before this is put together. And let them know that they're going to meet with some resistance if they come back with another recommendation to, so I think, and, and so, and it's kind of fortuitous at this point, because PSFA is in a particular precarious position right now. Their director just resigned. She's supposed to stay on until we find a new person. I'm going to say that the last hiring process was less than satisfactory for me, and I, I don't know how that's going to work. Their counsel also resigned, she's also gone, she retired, Mona retired. So they are in a pickle as far as having the resources to resist in some ways. I, I hate to put it that way, but I feel like this is kind of a fortuitous time to challenge them and say, look, if you're gonna, if you're gonna come back with that recommendation, recognize you're going to be challenged on it, and, and seriously challenged, not, not just Stuart mouthing off. It'll be a real, serious challenge to your recommendation, and so you might want to think about it. And, and I know that they got, they've got a whole new, I'm, I'm just going to say, I think it's going to be more favorable to us. I don't know what they will pick for a director, but I can, I can, I, I, I'm very familiar with the folks at PSFA. And so I'm, and yesterday's meeting was quite unusual, because just to let you know, we never have public comment, never. Yesterday, it started out with Michael Gos from SOTA, but then it went to Ryan Parks, who was the guy that summarily quit, the deputy director. Elise Ramos, who was the person that did all of this, she was the backbone. She quit when Ryan quit. They have, and then, and then they're announcing that now the director, who was, where the big conflict was, is also quitting, council's quitting. So it was very interesting, and then a lady from, and then a lady from Gallup McKinley came and was particularly caustic. And, and, well, it's just that they, it's a, it's a different situation. They're, they're claiming that we're not treating them fairly, because we gave another school some other, anyway. The reality was for us to have six, five, five or six people come in public comment was completely out. So the recognition here is, this is an agency that has some splainin' to do. And I think that we need to call out, you got to explain what, what this opinion is or change your opinion.
I definitely appreciate the idea of keeping it very narrow for us, not, not getting into all the other stuff. So one, one of the things I'm wondering is that, that letter that we're thinking for PSCOC, also having the same letter, but also sending a second one, addressing it to the PSFA awards subcommittee members.
PSFA is the department, they're, they're not the subcommittee. They make the recommendations to the subcommittee.
Okay, so to.
So Matt, what, what Valerie just said is.
The PSCOC subcommittee?
The PSCOC subcommittee, and they.
So that's all, that's all I mean, that's fine. To the entire council and to the awards subcommittee specifically.
That will be fine. I, I think though, when it comes closer to November, I think the time, then it will be time to go to PSFA and say, we would like to see what your recommendation is going to be, and we want to make sure you understand.
If we send a letter right now, so that they can have it in advance, and they create the calculations, is what I'm thinking.
Okay. It sounds like to me that Matt is there talking to Charles Lee, which is the chair of that awards committee. He's there talking to him right now.
All right. So, but from the PEC.
Yeah.
Right. Like our role, what we should do, a letter that's very, it's honestly, we keep it very minimal, directly to the point of this exact language, that we would like them to calculate the mem rate according to this. And that's it.
And award to that, right.
Yeah. Commissioner Creo?
Is there a downside to doing a letter to the attorney general's office concurrent with all of this?
I think that's, the, the recommendation, Ms. Barnes, is that it just could be premature. It's just, like they're, getting the attorney general involved could create tension that maybe not be necessary, if we could just do it this way. Like if we, I mean, we haven't, we haven't asked this before. It's not like it hasn't, it's not like they're, we, we've been trying at this for years and they're not listening. We haven't as a commission, and even as a commissioner, right? Like Commissioner Ingham found this last year during that vote, which I, I totally understand, like, oh, whoa, hold on, what just happened? And then, and then the whirlwind start. So, I mean, we haven't done anything yet. So I think to skip to, it's kind of like when you're a parent, when you're a family, and you have a problem with your student, and then you come to the PEC instead of going to the principal, that's kind of how I see it. Okay. I do want to, okay, yeah. Ms. Fox? And then I want to get, get just like a consensus. And then tomorrow, I think we can vote to like allow you to speak on behalf of the commission, and to allow the letter to come on behalf of the commission. We'll do it in the vote tomorrow. Ms. Fox?
Thanks, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I would just like to sort of suggest that, given the apparent upheaval at the PSFA level, the PSFA is the staff that's doing all this calcula, calculations and all this work for the PSCOC. And I think there may be an opportunity there, that if we want a particular, if we want to support our letter with a little bit of doing the work for the PSFA, who might not have the staff wanting to wade through this or able to wade through this, that perhaps we might get some more traction if we at least attempt to do the PSFA's work for them and append that to the letter, maybe not put that in the letter, but perhaps just make that something that we supply eventually. And I, I mean, Patty and I can work with Julia on that. I'm volunteering Patty. Look at her, she's so happy. But I'd be happy to try and wade through this. I have to admit, I don't understand the PSCOC's notes here on pages 123 and, and beyond about how they came up with this, these scenarios. And so I'm, I may have to wade through that with Julia a little bit, but.
I agree.
Commissioner Ingham, and then I think we're ready to move on.
Okay, so the only thing I would suggest is that the, the actual calculations and everything, the, the work PSFA has to do is minimal now. It's all laid out. When you read that motion, it's already done. They wouldn't have to recalculate what it would be with the CPI for this last year. Big deal. That, that's nothing. What we'll, I think we need to give them is, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do some work, we need to craft a letter that says why we disagree with this being a not to exceed. And just give it to them, a rebuttal to their interpretation, a clear, concise rebuttal that is crafted by council, and we give that to them, they will, that, I mean, for me, I already told, I already told Mona, look, I might have a different interpretation. And she was kind of shocked that I would have a different interpretation than what she had. But, but, you know, it would be difficult for them to get a new counsel and be them up to speed to make a rebuttal to something that we pinned carefully. So if I was going to ask for assistance, that's what I would like to do, is have a letter to PSFA that says why we disagree with their, their recommendation, and that they, the next recommendation we would expect that you would consider are, are this response that we give them. Okay?
All right, can I get just like nods of heads, so that we can, all right. And then if, Ms. Barnes tomorrow, if you don't mind just kind of drafting a motion for us at the end of the meeting for that item. All right, great. Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Ingham. Seriously, just spotting it, that's a, it's a lot of money. I mean, that's a lot of money, so good spot and a lot of effort, yep. To try to figure it out and be able to articulate it the way you did, really awesome. So thank you. All right. That will bring us to item number three, discussion of possible development of a PEC strategic plan. So this item I'm bringing forward to get a consensus as well, to see if, make sure the commission is wanting to move forward on it. So the CSP grant allows for or requires that the, the grant holder provide support for authorizing practices in the state. So talked to Matt Paul, he actually brought it up during the legislative session of like, hey, we, we want to support the commission, what do we do? You know, and I think we're focused on something very specific during the legislative session. So it's kind of come to the space where, you know, one of the things that, and I've talked to the EC about it, and Patty, and we've spoken to, to people, is we're thinking that we don't have a strategic plan. And as a commission, that's probably a hindrance to progress, is not having a clear vision of, of where the commission's going. And once again, I see oftentimes that, you know, we're in a role that changes over possibly every two years, right? We, we work with an administration that changes up to every four years, but our charter leaders often hang out. You know, they go through the turmoil of all the transition at our level. And so the thought is that creating a strategic plan allows, allows for some continuity. And also, once again, as someone who maybe wants to run for commission, or as they enter the commission, there's an understanding of what the role is of what we do, how we do it, and what the vision looks like, so that we're not just kind of throwing things and hoping to hit a bullseye every once in a while, but doing things strategic, and I think that'll help increase our efficiency as well. So talked to Matt Paul, he wants, he's willing to use the CSP money to fund it. So this wouldn't require any funding from the schools themselves. It comes from the CSP grant. And Patty and I had had discussions with Jim Gunner from the National Charter School Institute about that, and, and just being happy with the way that they led our performance framework work. And it's something that they kind of do for boards and commissions around the country already. So the idea would be to, you know, send this to a subcommittee, once it, but to have Matt go ahead and do the work of starting the process of hiring the National Charter School Institute, to go ahead and lead us through the work and get the, you know, go through subcommittee and then get the whole commission involved to, as to what that looks like, and creating a five, 10-year strategic plan, something along those lines. So open for number one, if that's a good idea, if there's a different way to use authorizing money to help support us, if there's something else that, I mean, it's hard, because, I mean, technically, we have the money we need to do whatever we want. So it is really to help fulfill that obligation from the CSP grant. So really trying to flex those, if we have dollars to spend, flexing it for best possible purpose. So number one, is it a good idea? Is that the direction we want to go? Is there something else that you feel like is more valuable at this time? And how do you all feel about the National Charter School Institute kind of helping guide us in the work, not lead, but guide? Commissioner Creo?
Yes to a strategic plan, no to 10-year, yes to five-year. Is Jim the, our new Naomi?
No, Jim's the CEO.
I'm just curious, because she was so wonderful to work with.
Naomi was a staffer of the Charter School.
So there'd be somebody else. I would say yes, having somebody guide us in the process. I would say no to subcommittee. I would say, just in a way, in the same way that Naomi guided the entire commission when we came up with our, our mission, our vision, our, that, and then there's that third thing, what we just did in a work session. We did it over a couple of work sessions, maybe allotting two hours on a Thursday morning, and I think we could, you know, hammer out a lot of things for this.
Commissioner Ingham?
I kind of want to echo what Steve said about being super impressed as how Naomi let us, I mean, I've seen that process take eons to get consensus. And so, and, and something that, what Steve said about doing it between us all, that facilitates getting a consensus. And I think that's really important. I think this would also facilitate for us our legislative agenda, because I think that that is part of what we need with a strategic plan, is how we're going to deal with the legislature. And, and, and then third, okay, so PSFA, PSFA is going through a strategic plan right now. They are spending tons of money going through this elaborate process. And I'm going to say, I'm a little disturbed at how, how much they're doing just to figure out what they're doing. And so I, I would, I would hate to get involved in a really extensive thing, because I don't think this needs, this needs to be, we, we should inform Charter School Institute what we think our stuff is. Let them cogitate on it for a while, bring it back to us, help us come to a consensus amongst ourselves. I don't think it's, it, it doesn't have to be that fully engineered strategic plan that goes in. I mean, what I'm watching happening at PSFA is, want to use a word, but I can't use it. It's not, it's not very effective, I'm just going to say.
Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, in my business career, I went through probably 20 strategic plans that we would do, five-year strategic plans, that's what they'd be. I think the most effective one I ever saw was the one that Naomi did. for our vision and all that. And I think quite simply, we just format process just like she did. I think it wasn't a two or three work sessions for ninety minutes to one hundred and twenty minutes. And that would, that would focus everybody on what the needs are. I, I personally don't think it would need to, I don't think it needs to be to a subcommittee. I think the way that the process was with Naomi would work out perfectly. And be, and be very succinct because these things I've seen many times, May Company, Macy's, all these places, it gets way out of control. So, keep it succinct, just like Naomi did.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I, I just concur that, that a strategic plan is, is a good idea. Less, less on kind of defining who we are, some of, you know, obviously some of that. But really working, you know, what do we anticipate in the next five years as far as, so that we can look at it and say, okay, so these are the legislative pieces that need to fall in order and so forth. You know, I think that, that we have been responsive, but I think we need to be more proactive in, in that, in that roadmap and, and planning for, for this. So, I think it's, it's fantastic idea, you know? And it'll give us a, like I said, a roadmap to say, okay, this year we'll do this. And then we can, then we can add this legislative piece and so forth. So, great idea, great idea.
Love the idea behind the five-year. Think we should do it in the same way as how Naomi brought about. I like Commissioner Ingham, you brought up, you know, the things that we came up with, with Naomi, our vision, our mission, our core values. I like the idea of, you know, giving that to the Charter School Institute and letting them, you know, come up with some potential ideas as well, rather than us just feed it to them. Because those are supposed to be our guiding principles, right? That is what we, we all agreed to, and they should be able to also give us some ideas as well as us give them some things to, to think about as well. So, I really like that idea because that's what we, that, that should be our guiding principle for our five-year strategic plan.
Commissioner Taylor?
So, I, I, I do also want to say that, that I, I like the idea of a five-year plan, you know? But some of these things that we're gonna put in play are gonna take longer than five years. So, I think we need to have, you know, we need to focus on, okay, this is the immediate five-year plan. But a ten-year plan with, with those, with, with those ideas kind of giving them time to play out and, 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 and really come to fruition is, I think is important as well. I, I hate to commit to ten years like that because things will change, but at the same time, we need to have a direction. And it, it, as, as we all know, it's gonna take longer than five years for some of the things we want to happen, I think, so.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I like the idea of looking at having them look at our mission and vision and taking a look at best practices across the country with other strategic plans that they've probably helped work on and say, this is what other charter authorizers, you know, have done. This is, yeah, this is a pathway that you could do it. And then we say, well, no, that's really not. But it, it gives us a, a framework to be able to work off of. I like that, and I agree. Five years is the goal, but there's things that, you know, are, you know, hopefully you'll be mostly there, but there's some things that just aren't gonna be attainable in that, in that five years. But I think we need more consistent direction because we, we do, we, we get to the legislative sessions and we're knee-jerk reaction to a lot of things and we don't have enough time to do it. And, you know, we should be planning for the sixty-day now. And that's what the strategic plan would help us work with because the thirty-day is.
Yeah. Commissioner Beck?
Yeah. A question to that from my previous experiences. The, it's a five-year plan. It, it, it has ideas beyond that, but it gets updated every year. What you talked about was a framework. What you're creating is not just a five-year plan. This is not a static process. This is a dynamic process. And every year it gets updated. So, that five-year plan moves out. That's, that's how it becomes the most successful.
Commissioner Creo?
A living document. Isn't that like the jargon that's used? Yeah, right? The, um, yes, I like the, I love the idea. The legislative, we should be talking about that now. And also, I'm gonna reach out to Joe Guian, same thing. Let's not wait. I know, but it's worth, you know, let, let's not wait. The, um, I like the idea, and I think it was mentioned by others. We don't need somebody to help us with our vision, our mission, and our core values. We did that. And I think we did it really well. I mean, I'm really proud of it. Every time I see it, it's like, this is so cool. And I remember how long and arduous it was with Santa Fe Public Schools when we tried to do those things, strategic plans and everything else. And so, just having the right guide, but that, to me, needs to be the foundation so that to, is Jim like our, whoever it is over at the, the place, they, they know that this is where, we've already done this work. Help us build on this. What is Naomi doing right now?
We could talk about that offline. Um, so, the one thing I will say is I wonder if there's a way to do a blend of full commission every month. I mean, this isn't, it took us three months to get six sentences created as a full commission. And I'm just concerned about the efficiency of doing, I don't know how long of work. I mean, the strategic plan, while we, we could say we want to keep it as simple as possible, that's not the point of it. It's not the point to be simple. It's the point to be comprehensive. And so, I do think it's going to take, I mean, it took us years of every other week meeting to do the performance framework. I mean, we went every other week and it took us years. Oh, yeah, it was every week for after, yeah, for about a year, yes. I'm just saying, I do think there's a world in which we have the full commission guiding, but in the in-between time to actually progress this to where we're doing a good job and it's efficient and we're not taking a year plus to do it, I do think it would be valuable for a subcommittee to be taking the commission direction every month and then doing the work. Like, because there is tedious work that has to happen with a strategic plan. It's not, and having all of us do everything every time, I don't see it happening fast. I just don't see it. However, I do think if we did it to where the full commission's doing it and there's a subcommittee doing the work, the tedious work in between, and then presenting every single month to the commission with the facilitator, that, to me, makes more sense and I believe it could be more efficient. I don't think it precludes anyone's involvement. I do just worry about the efficiency of doing the full commission every month. And that's the only time we work on it.
I, I, I can see your point. And I guess, I think the, the subcommittee part might be really necessary in the process of procuring and, and communicating with Charter School Institute at first especially. I, I, I would defer to the Charter School Institute as to how much input and stuff that, I mean, because it, it's kind of, I see your case with, with PSFA's strategic plan. It has taken the whole department eons to, to address all the issues. And they, the, the company that's doing the strategic plan came back with all sorts of, of, of proposals. So, I think that maybe to start out with a subcommittee, get through the procuring with PCSNM and speaking to them initially, get some feedback from them. And then we could resolve whether we need to continue that subcommittee if they feel like we can come in and do what we did with Naomi and come to consensus. I think both are valuable, but, but I think it's really valuable for the whole council to have some degree of, of the tedious work with it, just so we own it. That's exactly it. If we're not doing what PSFA did, or I gave a, a recommendation, then that's good enough for me. I don't want, I don't want that to be the case. If we're gonna do this, we need to make it. And I think it's really important to do it as quickly as we can just because I, I think there's big issues that I feel like I want to address. I don't know how long I'll be here, and I, you know, I know that there's five-year plans and all that. But five-year plan, I want this done now. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling very anxious to get, get going on it.
My, I mean, my, honestly, I do have this like, I have this like clock countdown in the back of my mind for a change in commissioners in a year and a half and change in administration in a year and a half. So, for me, I mean, I know, I know the idea is like, well, let's just do it quick, and we did it in three sessions. I mean, we did very little work in three sessions. I mean, creating the vision, mission, and core, that is a few words. We're about to create a document. And so, that, that's what is in the back, just so everyone knows, that is what's in the back of my mind, is timeliness, efficiency, never absconding from the entire commission. But I just know the kind of work that it takes in between full commission meetings. Like, I understand what that takes. And if we do full commission meetings as, and that's it, we will not get this done in here. We just won't. I just don't, I don't see it. I don't see the world in which it happens. And I do think we have this continuity right here. Like, we have this, we have incredible continuity for the next year and a half. Like, we have a great commission. We have great staff. We have great support right now to get a lot of work done before we have to do a transition, right? Like, we're gonna have a transition coming up. So, for me, it's like trying to get as much as we can in black and white for how this commission is, is functioning right now because it's functioning so well. But it's based off of just all of us on here right now. There's nothing in black and white for how we function. It's just based off of like, we, we work well together. We just work well together. That's not, I, I'm not gonna, I mean, knock on wood. Hopefully for schools, that's always the case. I don't trust that that's always the case. And so, I just, that's, that's just so, that's the only consideration I have in the back of my mind. Uh, KT, and I can't remember it. Someone else raised their hand, and then Patty.
I don't disagree. I think that there's, yeah, it's definitely gonna be a lot of work to get this, get this thing done, just like the performance framework was a lot of work to get done. I do think maybe, you know, a brainstorming session with all of us together up front would be good to kind of set the direction for the strategic plan. And like you said, the monthly updates would, monthly updates, but also working during that, the work session to refine whatever was worked on by the subcommittee would be one hundred percent, I think, what we would need. Yeah, exactly what we did with the performance framework, right? So, I, I'm on board with that. I think that having a facilitator like a Naomi during those work sessions would be valuable though. Because I know that we didn't necessarily have that with the performance framework, but I think that may have, maybe have pushed it faster. If, I know that you guys put in a lot of work with the performance framework, but it's possible that they could have, you know, gotten it pushed along.
So, that's for Valerie. And when I come talk to you about this afterwards, that'll be part of, I think, the contracting is basically, is like what we're gonna ask is that the facilitator actually comes out here monthly, basically. You know, like, in addition to like the, however many meetings we have with a virtual subcommittee, we also want whoever that facilitator is, we want them to commit to being here to work with the full commission. And I do, I, I, I agree as well. Like, I think this, the tone is set from the full commission and then the subcommittee carries it out and then comes back and says, okay, now what? The full commission then directs the subcommittee. The subcommittee goes and does the work. It, it should never be subcommittee to the commission. I, I don't think, like, it's not a, I don't think that's, just so you know, that wasn't the way I was proposing. Patty?
I mean, that's what I was gonna say, that I think there has to be that meeting first with the commission to get the sense, so that that subcommittee can look at whatever that facilitator is saying and saying, oh, no, the commission was clear, that's not what we want to do, not, you know, having to redo it. So, I think the task for the whole commission to give to the subcommittee, so the subcommittee is clear the direction that wants to be, and they can say, no, I'm pretty sure commissioner said no to that, and we're not gonna, that's not what the intent was. And then, you're right. I think questions can go out to commissioners before the next meeting that came from the subcommittee so they could look at it, answer it, and then help guide that work session. So, we're focused at that work session on pieces of it and not all over the, but it, it really, yeah. It would have been a whole lot easier, but I think a part of it was we weren't controlling the funding for Naomi for that performance framework. So, we were very, we were told, we were very limited in her being able to come out and speak with us.
So, I think just so you all know, next steps is, I'll, I'll have a conversation with Matt. Let him know we got consensus. And then I think we'll either create a subcommittee just for this or I, my idea would be to send it to policy is what seems to be the most sensible one that's already formed. But I think this could be one that is specific to this.
I think this needs to be a specific subcommittee.
Policy has enough on there.
Yes. I agree, specific to this. And if it's, if there's gonna be a subcommittee,
I would make sure that, session, we're really flushing out a lot of stuff that they were working on, getting accurate reports. This is where we're at on this. We want to make sure that we have, you know, your buy-in on what we've come up with. And, you know, just constantly that sense of accountability with the whole commission every month in a work session.
Great, appreciate you all. All right, item four, the Discussion of the Procurement Office Form Change. And this is the first reading of the Procurement Office Form Change. Ms. Barnes?
This is an item that came out of the Policy Subcommittee, but it, it is the same change as was done on the Business Manager change. When we separated out the three forms, I think we realized that the procurement officer was in the same position as the Business Manager, which is not something that their board needs to vote on because the board, it's leveled down from there. So, we made the exact same change that we did on the other one, but then consistent with our policy, we want to have it be two readings. So, I think it's pretty straightforward. It'll be there next month as well. It has the same assurance as well that stops that extra documentation from having to come from, that paperwork having to come to PEC. Finally, I'll just note that in the Policy Subcommittee, we did discuss whether that idea of having an assurance rather than providing documentation, an assurance that the board vote was held if one was needed. And the CSD is gonna make those changes throughout, just to make it simpler for schools to submit those forms. But this procurement officer form is the same as the Business Manager form. It'll be there next month as well. I think any policy member, the Policy Subcommittee member, or I can answer any question.
Yeah, I'll go.
Julie, change the red line.
Any questions on this form? All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Barnes. That'll take us to item five, Discussion of the 2026 Calendar First Review. So, we'll go ahead and go through this. This will be, we'll put it on for a second reading and vote next month just so that everyone can start planning out their year next year. So, if anyone has any dates that look, um. Commissioner Creo?
Just one thing, a kind of a housekeeping thing for Consuela, because I know, or imagine if she's watching, where it says Revision Draft One, I mean, if there could be a date every time we do a new one, it just makes it really clear as to what we're looking at. Anyway, but so, I'm, I don't understand something. On, in June, the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, I don't understand that, all these colors and.
There's a, there's a National Charter School Conference. It's the twenty-four through the twenty-six, but we need to have our meeting and work session, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Right. Okay, so.
So, the other option would be to move our meeting, if you, if we want to prioritize folks being able to attend that conference, then we would need to move, well, we couldn't, we cannot.
The nineteenth is the holiday, right?
Yeah, nineteenth is, I mean, we. 19th is, I mean, we could maybe do like a Wednesday, Thursday, the, the week before, but.
Yeah, that was my thought is Wednesday, Thursday, or if we don't even have, I guess we probably need to have the work session 100% in June. But my thought was that we didn't do a work session, we just have our meeting on the Thursday.
Yeah. Yep. We could do that. We could move the meeting to Wednesday, Thursday. Um.
Is she?
Y'all taking notes? Okay, great. So for June, we're gonna do the meeting or the work session and meeting, the 17th and 18th. And that'll leave that, um, conference available.
I know.
Anything else, commissioners? And I do think this is one, like if you do see something between today and next month, we could make a change, um, next month and still be able to vote on it. I think it's.
So the three days that we have for renewals, is that because we're anticipating, we have eight, is that right?
How many renewals?
So what are we predicting? Cause we, if you only put three days there.
For this year, there'll be 11, eight state, three district. That you're anticipating? Because we won't know till October for sure. No, yeah, yeah. Next. Yeah. No problem. Take your time.
The only other thing, suggestion, um, is some of the colors are very close together. Uh, maybe just making it very distinct on some of these, especially that column to the far left. It, and the next one, some of them are very close together. To be able to have that distinction, yeah.
And so a little bit more contrast in colors.
Can we go month by month? Cause he just asked me something and I just, would that be okay?
I mean, I'm just, if you have something, just.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I got a quick question. What, what, what is April 1st through 9th? What is that?
Oh, that's, you know, because look at the color.
Yeah.
That's Passover. So you have nights one and two.
Charter school applications.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that is definitely the paint sample.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just marking a religious holiday.
All of them are religious holidays?
The interesting about Passover is.
Very light tan.
You really would only need to put the first and the second. Yeah, I don't know, because while it lasts the entire time, no, people have their sators on the first and the second.
I'm displaying tab number two on the screen and that gives you the breakdown of colors.
You know, that's thoughtful. Um, no, it's interesting. Yeah. And, uh, and in September, it's the same thing with Yom and Rosh Hashanah, but none of that affects us right now because our, all of.
Director Russell?
Days.
Uh, Chair Burt, commissioners, um, there will be 11 state charters submitting renewal applications in 2026 and an unknown number of district charters.
Okay.
Um, also regarding the charter schools conference, we don't have the date held yet at the hotel. And, um, we heard complaints from school leaders about June. And I sent out a survey, um, about a week ago. That's, the due date is tomorrow, um, for schools to give us feedback, whether they'd rather have it in May or they like it in June.
How many responses have you gotten so far?
Well, it's, the due date isn't until tomorrow, so I haven't checked them yet.
So, I'm sorry. You asked them for May or June? I mean, May they're probably gonna say no to because graduation and all the stuff that's going on the end of the year.
And that's what I figured. I, I asked them, you know, they, they keep saying when, you know, we don't like June. When we did it in July, they didn't like July. I, I don't, I mean, I would do it in November or January because that P C S N M is in December. If P C S N M would switch with us, but they.
That's okay. We don't need December, but what about like in April?
Well, I did, I asked last week of it, because most of April is spring break and testing windows.
That's true.
So I asked about the last week of April.
Nobody's ever gonna like anything.
All right, keep going.
Right.
Yep. There's never gonna be a good day.
Never gonna make you.
You said January, maybe?
But P C S N M is in December.
Right. So it's just like, it feels back to back. Okay.
Yeah. And December, well, with renewals that we have, December is like a nightmare. Cause we often can't make the P C S N M because it overlaps. So, and, and it's, people go on, balance calendars go on winter break earlier than schools go on their holiday break.
Commissioner Beckham?
Speaking of December, if we have 11 renewals that are state and, um, potentially, you never know when one's gonna switch over from district, are we gonna try to do four, four and three?
I would assume, so I think we would also use the 17th is what we traditionally do. We usually don't do a work session and we do renewals during that Thursday as well.
You're right.
So I think it would be three, three, two.
Well, and.
Or three, 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 two.
We could always put that carrot out there that, to do November, do an early renewal if anyone wanted to.
Yeah, yeah.
On the 18th?
Yeah, 17th and 18th, yeah.
Process in November. Yeah, the 19th. We could do three schools on the 19th.
No, we can't.
Can't do it until they've had a, a, a.
They've been on the.
Cycle. Yeah, a cycle. Yeah.
A year.
Yeah.
That wouldn't, ideally that saves a couple months every year.
We could, we could be a mere hint.
Well, yeah, I think generally what we, what we've done when we start, um, scheduling is we try to like do a balanced calendar of like, you know, uh, uh, some schools that the C S D is believing should be pretty simple recommendations. And then putting a complex one at the end of the day.
Also travel to them and stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, C S D actually does a really good job considering.
Yeah.
When they're scheduling out what that looks like.
So, from a standpoint, we're gonna just keep it like this, knowing, knowing that the 17th of December and the 19th of November.
Correct, can be useful.
Essentially, okay, that's perfect.
But the idea of the carrot, if somebody wants to do it on the 19th in November, because my guess is based on last, many of the last years, we are gonna have some other local charters want to come to us. And so if we, let's say we have two, that means we're gonna have 13. Um, and that's a lot to try to do. Even in, yeah, I would, like the morning of the 19th, throw a carrot out there to somebody.
All right. And Director Russell?
Uh, yes. Uh, so due dates for the conference survey is, again, is not till tomorrow, but I just, there's been a lot of responses. And the most popular date seems to be the last week of April, not June or May. And so I don't know how commissioners feel about that.
I feel really good about that.
Two thumbs up for that for me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Last week of April?
Yeah.
Patty, Mike?
Are, are you thinking this is gonna be a change to more of a weekend thing or still during the week?
Still during the week.
Interesting. Okay.
Because most of their, their spring breaks are done by like the second week of April usually.
More like to go during their work hours where they're.
Yeah, I get you.
Yeah.
Like the 20th through the 22nd?
Probably like the 27th to the 30th, because I asked the last week.
Oh, okay.
Here and you're into testing windows and things.
Are you thinking of Siletta this next year?
That's what we're looking at, but that, we, it's available in June. We don't know about April yet. Our staff hasn't even started looking, um, I mean, actually our staff has started looking at the other dates, but, um, I, I don't have an update yet.
I'll look at Sandia.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest. We just had a conference with Nipsey.
Thing, yeah. Um, the entire C S D staff in Santa Fe would have to drive there and back every day because it's just within the 50.
I understand. That's cool.
All right. Any other, anything else on the, and this is just for, if you see anything between this month, next month, we're gonna have this back on the agenda next month. So, um, we'll have Consuelo, if you want to make the updates from today, and we'll look at them next month. And if there's anything else you see, you can always just shoot, uh, Consuelo an email about like, hey, can you draft it? Can you propose this in the draft as well? Or, I mean, and we can take care of it. All right. Cool. Thank you. Thank you, Consuelo, for getting our draft started. All right. Next item. Input to the chair, um, on new applicant questions or requests for further information. So, uh, Ms. Barnes already drafted, uh, the letters, uh, to start with. Um, they include everything that's in the C S D, um, documentation recommendation. So those are already included. So if there are additional questions or additional concerns that are not already included in the C S D recommendation, um, right now is a great time. And Ms. Barnes, I, are, will you be taking notes for us and drafting it into the letter? Go ahead.
Please do it school by school.
All right. So let's go ahead and we're gonna start with, I'm gonna pull up Collins Lake, uh, first. And so commissioners, if you have any additional comments or questions you would like to include, now's a great time and Julia will draft them into there. Uh, Commissioner Ingham?
Know it's gotta be here, but I'm not seeing anything about, um, the facility. And I, I, I'm probably missing it somewhere. But I, I think it, I have already talked, I talked to Steve. I talked to P S F A. P S F A has some grave concerns about this. Okay. So I knew that. And I told them, we'll get you out there and go do an evaluation, open your mind, see what you can see, tell us what's dropped dead. But get out there and get it done. But that's the, for me, that is a almost drop dead issue for this school. And so it's, 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 it, for me, that's the one thing I would, I, since I'm not finding it here, I would, I would say from my standpoint, I think that's a big issue.
Well, I guess my question is for this process, because previous, they had to, it was a question that wasn't something that hadn't been addressed through community input or the capacity interview. But that it had to, they had to be able to show the answer, show us in the application. So they couldn't bring us new information. You don't get a second bite at the apple. So I, you know, if the capacity interview didn't mention it, but you still had a question about it, they have to go back to the application and say, see, we did answer that here. If it's not there, it's not there.
How does that fit with this situation?
You can still ask the question.
Well, I'm asking the question, I mean, they don't have P S F A's input. And so it's, it's important that we have that.
If you look, uh, what Julia's drafting, she, I think she's drafting it in a way to where they're gonna have to go back to their application to be able to respond to this. But I think it does address what you're, I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't think any applicant usually goes to P S F A before they put in an application. I mean, the idea that it's gonna be in the application already, that they went to P S F A and had an evaluation.
Okay, but what they, they can say is we intend to go to.
Does this, can you look at what she's writing and see if it'll help you get to the question that you're
Okay.
wondering? Okay.
It's fine.
Sam?
Yeah, I, I think the, this brings up an issue of the, kind of the cart before the horse with the idea of, um, the, you know, the opening checklist, right? You cannot open your school without e occupancy certification. P S F A has to evaluate. To what degree are we expecting applicants to be able to say, yes, we can assure that we will get e occupancy? I don't think they have any clue, right? So I don't know that that will provide us any further clarification that their application has already, because I just, I mean, from face value, it looks like there is no way that that's gonna get e occupancy. But right now, that's not, that's not our concern. I mean, that's, that, right, that's none of our business, to be honest.
Commissioner Creo?
It's on them, but I don't think it hurts for them to have P S F A go out there. We, five of us went to the site. We visited the site. The yurts are far more permanent, stable, comfortable, temperature controlled, everything than any bungalow or portable could ever be. And this is the part about opening their minds. You know, they've got to get out there. And I think it would behoove, um, the school to pressure them to do so. How often do we actually get a school that has a site?
Almost never.
Right. And here they have not just a site, an incredible site and, um, for what they want to do. And they also have plans for, and because of the, uh, the center, the autistic, uh, the center that they have, if they need for whatever reason to be in some sort of a facility like that for the day, I don't know, whatever the conference, I don't know. They have that available to them as well. But, um, I mean, I, I, I agree, P S, P S F A has to get out there. And quite frankly, if I were the school and P S F A declined them for whatever reason, I'd, I'd sue their.
No, they're already gone.
Commissioner Manas?
Go with them.
All right, Commissioner Manas?
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, S- Steve brought up a, a couple of good points while we were out there. You know, they got the, they have the grant funding. They're already gonna be building the facility, uh, I, that is supposed to be for the autism center, but they've also said that they plan to use that facility for admin offices and, and whatnot. Uh, but the suggestion was, because, I mean, I asked him specifically, I said, have you guys finalized your plans yet? No, we haven't finalized our plans yet. Well, why don't you make sure that your plans fit what is required and then you're covered. And so I think that, that that's a distinct possibility, that they just go ahead and make sure that they're gonna be covered with what they've already been cleared for funding for. So, uh, I think it may be a moot point in terms of them being able to house students.
And online is it still? Right, right. It, you, you just, they just need to understand that they won't open if they don't have the occupancy and it, and the burden is all on them to get that done.
It's not just the occupancy though, it is, they have to meet P S F A's adequacy standards.
Right.
Um, and, and that's probably more difficult. I think the e occupancy is really this weird thing that nobody really knows what that means. But their, their adequacy standards are very rigorous. I was just gonna say, they're rigorous. And so, so the, they, I just want P S F A to go out there and give them what has to be done. I mean, it, it may be that it's, that it's impossible. It may not be, I had another, with, with other schools, they said that facility's not adequate. But then, well, what do we need to do? But, well, why don't you change the ceiling tiles out and it's, and, and it's like, that was good enough. Okay. So I don't know.
Right. But that's on the school.
Right. Well, yeah, but I, I appreciate this question because I do just think it helps with like a plan B. But I mean, I, I agree. I, I think schools start in portables all the time. And from what I saw is those were much nicer than most portables I've ever been in.
We used to fight to teach in the portables.
Yeah.
Because it's nicer than the building.
I know.
Give me that portable, because it's got.
Yeah, I, I do think, I think this, this seems okay, but I, I also like, for me, I'm like, I don't know if it's a issue of whether or not the application would be approved or not based on, because we don't tell schools, oh, you don't already have a facility, so we're not going to approve you. So, but I do, I appreciate the question and I agree with it. Yeah.
Well, I, I guess the only concern I have with the question is what is the, what is gonna be an acceptable answer? So if you say whether or not it can be approved as an adequate school facility, is that an expectation for applicants that they know the P S F A adequacy standards? I mean, I've, I've been in many facilities where the adequacy standards have been crossed through, where they say, oh no, that doesn't apply, that didn't apply, or this does, that doesn't, right? So I just wonder, and I'm just thinking in the sense of our approval, disapproval of an application, I don't know if this, what answer would be satisfactory until P S F A says yes and e occupancy is granted. So that's my only concern with.
And that's a good.
What that was.
We don't, if we need to strike this question, that's fine. I'm, I'm already addressing it. So it doesn't really have to be in this. I just thought maybe it would be wise, but it doesn't have to be, like I said, I had already talked to Steve, I've already talked to P S F A. They're, they're heading out there this week, I think.
And I'm gonna say, one of the applicants prior that we had said no to, our primary, our, we never mentioned facility as a reason not to approve it. But the cabinet secretary supported our non-approval based on them not having a facility, which had nothing to do with, and we, we lost it. It's like, why did you pick that when that wasn't, you know, so, and rightfully so, there was no, you know, we can't require that. So, yeah, it's, you know, in my mind, do I think they should have been more proactive in discussions? Absolutely. Absolutely, because they have a facility. Most are, hey, we want to be here, we want to be there, we don't know. This, they're saying, this is where we're going to be, so it's like, okay, you're so far ahead of everyone else, keep going. Yeah, but that's commencement of operation.
All right, yeah, so I think we're going to take it off. All right, correct. All right, Commissioner Klausha Shilich? Sharon, are you?
Here. Oh, okay. All right, well, I had some great things that I just said, now I've got to retract. I was just wondering if this has been a problem before, but since you're going to take it off, then I guess, but I still have a concern. What generated this question?
The, at the community input hearing and in the application, the applicant listed that they would be using yurts to provide classroom space for the children. And definitely in black and white, hearing that sounded concerning, just as far as the, the law did not probably anticipate yurts being used as classrooms, and so how that would kind of overlap is what the concern was. But as, what we were talking about is that, that's not something that we use to approve or disapprove an application, that this applicant is actually just really far ahead of most, and so we're being maybe overly critical of the location or of the, the space, whereas we usually give applicants that full year to go find a space and figure it out.
Okay, all right, that answers my question. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Sharon. All right, anything, nothing from CSD to add? Yeah, I mean, if there's anything additional from CSD that you guys didn't already include, you have a space here as well. Yeah, because this will go out today, that we, okay, next one. I'm sorry.
Chair Burt, just to clarify, CSD has not made its recommendation yet. All the commission has received is the peer review report, and CSD's recommendation is due around the first of August.
Okay. All right, if there's anything you wanted to list here, we could add it in here for you. If there's anything additional that you know of already.
So.
That's not included in, in what we found. Commissioner Creo.
Can we be sent PFS, PSFA adequacy standards? I'm curious as to parts of that that might be incredibly dated, just, I mean, the minute I read the application and saw yurt, yeah, it conjures up things right away. But until you've actually been there and looked, stood in the yurt, and you realize how much better it is than a portable, how much more stable, permanent, all of these things, it changes your thinking about even the word yurt. And, you know, people live in yurts in like the Gobi Desert and the harsh winters, and they're fine. But I'm wondering.
I'll let, I'll let Commissioner Ingham answer. I'll say it's definitely not something in my lane.
I could, it is, I want to expand on that, I see it as them just nitpicking and finding all the reasons why not.
Okay, I can send it to you, be careful what you ask for. It's about a thousand pages.
And I don't need that.
It's, it's.
Your summation.
I, okay, so right, right now, we are reviewing the new adequacy standards. We just got through with a square foot calculator, it's incredibly political, you can't imagine the pushback we're getting, because every school wants big gyms, and they don't really give a crap about how big the classrooms are, but they want to take that square foot off. Anyway, that's a, it's a, you, I believe me, I, 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 I am going, I'm going to say, I am trying to review that, but it is a enormous document, and it has a lot of repercussions. And, and so, no, I, I want PSFA to come back with what their concerns are. And then we can do, then we don't have to go through the whole thing with them, then we can go back and say, is this really an interpretation issue? And, and, no, it's for him to do, but what I'm saying is, they need to know what their objections are first.
All right. All right, let's go ahead and move to INSPIDA. Once again, this was created with the information that's already been presented as concerns by the peer review findings, so all of those are listed. So if there's any additional concerns, as you read through the application, that were not addressed by the peer review team, that's what we're looking for. I'll give it just another second or two. All right, great. Ms. Barnes, I think we are good to go for those. All right, next is number seven, discussion of the implementation year checklist, review of necessary changes. Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Chair Burt. Commissioners, I.
And if you do, if you, this, for this one, if you don't mind, well, I think we will walk through it like page by page with you. And Commissioners, as you, as Missy presents the red line, stop it right there, you know, like if there's something after she presents, before we move to the next page, if you have a comment, we'll do it, we'll do it like that.
Apologies, I wanted my mouse. So the first change would be putting your logo on. I would like to suggest that you remove the, any date, any date on this, since we're not updating it every year, which is going to be used, that can lead to confusion with applicants, they'll think that they need to wait for one that says 25, 26, 26, 27, so. And then just added the updated to, correct the date, updating.
You are going to put this date of the update, but not a date on the.
Correct.
The first date.
So it would be implementation year checklist, and then we would have, you know, that, when you approved it, and when it was updated.
That's perfect.
And of course, that's also in the footer. We've updated the table, which you can see.
The table seems super oft, like, that's so long for titles of the pages, like the whole paragraph?
Yes, I can, I can work on that. It was a rush job to get this done.
Yeah, I mean.
I will remind, well, maybe, I spoke to the, to the EC in our last meeting, I am going to be proposing, I've been working with Valerie Ratliff Parker from PCSM, and I'm going to be proposing, we are going to be proposing some radical changes, but because we have the, the potential of two new schools in the implementation year this year, wanted to get some just logical changes, so I can make sure, I didn't like that either, and I can fix that, it just, it pulls from whatever, and so I'll, I'll make sure that that's fixed, and I, because I didn't focus on that, I apologize. So, um, well, I was going to suggest that we can get rid of part two, because that's part of the contract already. We've, well, it was part of the NOI application and everything, it's just kind of duplicative. We have made no changes to the part three, implementation year checklist, authority and purpose, nor the development of the implementation year checklist, nor the directions, nor the review process. But now, here we go, so, again, for the full commission, one of the issues that we came across was the formatting of the previous implementation year checklist, there are multiple asks within each indicator, and some of the schools get, there's a lot, and so when it's not broken out, I need five things for this one, I need 10 things for this one, things could go missing. And then when the epicenter people were setting it up, the, the holding places within epicenter, they were skipping some things. And so we want to make sure that there isn't any confusion for the applicants in, in what we're asking, what you guys are asking for. So, um, I have, I would like to propose that we move the, your school specific conditions to the top of the checklist, instead of being embedded after the May checklist. For October 1, the last addition you did was adding the board of finance designation. I would like to add a place for us to be checking in about administrative license, because we have noticed an issue with that. Then for the November 15 checklist, we are proposing, because again, this was something that was brought up this last year, confusion over the dates, so we're just making the dates the first. So it's not 15th, and then the first, and then the 15th, so it's just the first. And then there's really no change, I've just, I've moved the ask, which is number one, to the top, and then all of the asks within it are separated out into individual lines, so that you can see that for ask number one, there's a lot of, yes, Commissioner Creo.
In setting dates, since you're setting the first as unnecessarily to put in, like if the first is following a weekend, it's the previous Friday, or the following Monday? Or there, so there's no question for the app, for them?
I, I, I actually had that thought after the document was finalized, but before the, this meeting. Yes, I think it would be reasonable to put in, if the first falls on a weekend, it's due on Monday.
All right. But I will say that, no, we've never done that before. It's been the 15th or the first, no matter what, doesn't matter.
Yeah, if it's the first, it's the first. If it falls on a weekend, you better get it done the day before, so it's there on the first.
So it's, it's up to the commission, but it's.
I mean, do, do they, do they do that with my bill?
No, it is. But I, I would like some clarity, because I would also like some clarity on what is, is there a consequence if people don't turn something in by the due date?
The first is the first.
Except in statute, I mean, the, the reason I went to Monday is that in statute, it's always the first Monday after, blah, blah, you know, our, our renewal applications, I like it being done earlier, and you should have been a school teacher, Dr. Taylor.
Then they know that they don't have until that following Monday, if it's by November 1st, then you know, you've got to get it in the day before.
It's got to be spelled out, so have somebody like the people from that.
I, I guess, I mean, the due date, I don't know that it really matters, but because what are the consequences of missing that due date, right? I mean, it's, it's an implementation checklist, so you have basically a year to get this all done, I mean, yeah, so I don't think it really makes that much difference.
So that is a, that is a very prescient question, Commissioner Openchain. Ms. Brown and I discussed this, and we would actually like, as part of the, the, the big overhaul, that for the commission to set, to establish consequences for, for being, for not having things submitted timely, because right now, there's no teeth. And this is the first year that we've had this many issues with schools being late. And in the past, I mean, every school was on time for everything, it just wasn't an issue. And, you know, not to sound like a cranky Gen Xer, but as the millennials and Gen Z take over, I think there do need to be consequences.
Yeah, yeah, my, my major overhaul is going to ask for even a letter of intervention kind of during the.
I just don't under, I don't know what a consequence.
Well, let's, we don't, I don't think we need to go into, that's not on the table.
That's not.
So if we could, let's.
I didn't know if that was.
No, that's.
I didn't see it, but I didn't know.
That's for the big overhaul.
Determining the consequences, you're right, not on the table right now. Yes, there should be, and I would say, if you have a certain number of this, this, and this, you're, you're declined, you're out of the left.
So as you all start drafting that, you know you'll have some commission support for it. All right.
So, back to this, I mean, as you can see, there aren't, there's not a whole lot of red line editing in there, because I'm not changing any of the asks, I'm just changing how it looks, so that it can be slightly more clear to the applicants, the number of things that are being asked. So I, there is for seven, you know, the option one, option two, which was already in the previous.
There's not an option three?
You.
Not for first year schools.
Okay, thank you, I just.
And I believe that we, I did not include any language, but we could also include some language, and the major overhaul, that high schools are not allowed to choose option two, is that correct?
They are not allowed to choose option one.
High schools are not allowed to choose option one, okay. So it's a good thing I asked.
Because there's no growth data in option one.
So one other thing that you'll notice, uh, missing from this version, is all of the statutory and administrative code references, those are all collected in one table at the end, which makes the, the checklist shorter.
Yeah, so there is still resources, so, um, so they have to attend all the sessions, that's the same, I just, I, I think it highlighted to red, because I had to change the date, and I might have spelled something correctly. Uh, so then we have the March 1st checklist, which was always March 1st, I don't know why, what I was cupping from was made with March 15th. So again, there aren't any substantive changes. Now, I have removed the evidence that the school has consulted with language and culture in the March checklist, because it is in the November checklist, and it doesn't, it's something that I didn't catch the previous time that, that I could.
Game on you.
I know. I have, I have, uh, hit myself. So then also with governing board annual calendar, it is in the November checklist, and schools are, were resolving that in the back and forth, and so I didn't think we needed it in the March. And then the May checklist, again, I did add a signed contract of interest statement from the head administrator. Now, that is part of your checklist already, it's part of the pre-opening site visit checklist, so, and that was one, some of the feedback from Valerie Ratliff Parker was really PCSM wanted to see more of the pre-opening and commencement of operation stuff move up into the application.
Yeah.
And one of the things that we constantly are asking internally in CSD is, well, are they rolling out? Are they starting with all grades? Are they rolling out? And I'm like, we don't, where are we asking that question? So I've added that as an option, table showing rolling out of grades during the first charter term, because that is information that everybody needs.
Okay, so can I just, this has been a, a course of contention sometimes with the charter school division prior iterations, that the application would have the rollout there, and then sometimes it would change when it came to, you know, we've made the budget, we've done, we've made the, you know, we, we've run a lottery, and we're, we're not, we're not going to do grade five, you know? And then it's like, but they said in their application that they're doing grade five, it's like, well, what are you going to do to them? Are you going to make them kidnap kids off the street and say, no, you're going to be in my fifth grade? So I just, um, I, I just, I, I get it, I, I know that you need to know, but I, I think schools need to be clear, the applicants need to have a clear message as to whether, are you, you know, how, how much flexibility is there with the application? Because what happens if they say, we're going to do K5, and then all of a sudden, they say, no, we decided to do 68, you know?
That is, we have had schools, not, not saying, oh, we don't have enough for a fifth grade, so we're not going to do fifth grade, but, well, we said we weren't going to do a fourth grade, but we had so many people, so now we're going to do a fourth grade, it's really, so, yeah.
So my inclination, my, my inclination is, within the approved grade span, if they applied to be a 8 school, and they wanted to start with K2 and 6, and they said, no, you know what, we actually want to just start with K4. I, I, as long as it's within the approved grade span, I'd be fine with it, I, I just think that what belongs in the checklist is, they confirm, are we doing what we proposed in the application, or are we adjusting it because of?
That's fair.
All right, so then, so for number four, the first year operating budget, the, if the school has less than 95%, that again, is in your checklist already in the pre-opening site visit, but that seems like a, I, I don't, I don't know that any of our schools have ever been able to provide that information at the pre-opening site visit, I think it's more appropriate to move it up. Same thing with facilities. Um, same thing with facilities. All of that stuff is from your preopening checklist. Um, we didn't move all of it because I think it's inappropriate to think that they have E occupancy. Um, but they can have, and, and maybe they can't necessarily have a PSFA letter certifying the requirements at March. Um, but I'll have fun things for you to consider next time. Um, we do, you know, and again, so like the lease agreement, they may or may not have it yet, but this is like a check-in uh, that we can make sure that we're on top of it as well as, as they are, so that they're not letting anything fall behind. Um, so those three items under facilities aren't new. They're just moved up. Um, then there's no changes until 10. Um, status report on plan for obtaining required licensure. Um, again, that's moved up from lower in the, in the checklist. Uh, as well as evidence of a licensed gifted provider, either on staff or on contract, and then signed contracts supporting the minimum salaries. So, um, I did suggest, um, so what I did, so actually that's all, that first sentence there, evidence of the licensed special education provider and blah, blah. I suggest we take out those two. We separate the special education person and the gifted person. They're separated now in bureaus and stuff like that. So separating them out. Um, and then with the safe schools plan, so the safe schools plan is always due the December of their first year of operations. So they, they aren't going to be able to, they're not submitting that to the Charter Schools Division, but we want their plan, some type of timeline. So I just changed that language slightly. Because every year I have to explain, I'm not asking for your full safe schools plan in March or May. Uh, and then let's see if there are other changes. So from your commencement of operations checklist, if I've moved it up, it's crossed out here. Except for the facilities, I left all of, I left those things that were appropriate for later on preopening site visit. Um, again, assurance, if we didn't get the assurance or the lease in May, we'll get it in preopening. Um, and the evidence that they've timely submitted to PSFA for lease reimbursements. Um, nepotism conflict and conflict of interest. So we, we ask for a signed conflict of interest statement from the head administrator. We ask for the board's policy and procedure on a COI, but we don't ask for the board members COI, and I don't know if that's something you want or not. So I added it to signed conflict of interest statement from all currently seated board members, but that's just a proposal. Um, and then scheduling the preopening site visit and, um, excuse me? Oh, well, that's how I say it. I will fix it. Um, thank you.
So on that, um, just conflict of interest, because you're just proposing, I like the idea of the signed conflict of interest statement from all currently seated board members. I think it's important to have that from the get, set the tone.
I agree. Um, okay. So again, here I've, I've taken out the PSFA letter, the lease, because I've moved those up. Same with the things in item number five. Those have all been moved up. Um, I did lowercase the two and opening date there. And then the next part is the checklist resource. So like Director Russell said, every part of your application that exists now with a hyperlink, I've taken that into this checklist resources. So it's in one place. Um, put the indicator, put what, you know, generally what it's requiring, and then the hyperlink. We check on the hyperlink every single year before we send this to, um, new applicants to be, to be using to make sure that everything is correct. And I haven't done that yet, but it will be done. So don't test me on that. Um, so you can see, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of links, a lot of hyperlinks. So that's my proposal for the commission today.
I just wanted to go back to on the bottom of page 11, the state accountability system choice. I guess I thought that a high school could not choose option one. That so that, that you shouldn't.
That's correct. So, but we don't have just high schools that.
Right. But I think it ought to say, high schools may not, they don't have that choice because I don't want a high school to choose option one.
We could, we can add that.
Okay.
So something along the lines, high, Commissioner, well, so now, if you're K12, yes, you can, you can. It's only if you're nine.
Only, right. Commissioner Gibson and Commissioner Obenchain.
So this doesn't directly, it comes out as a result of if. So we do contract negotiations prior to the school doing their budget and doing this IY checklist. So.
It's, they're sort of concurrent, the November.
But not the May submission.
Right. The November submission is first.
So when they're, when we're contracting, they're saying, we're doing grades four to six. So are we doing, so now, now that I'm saying it, I'm actually thinking about it. So we're, actually when we're contracting, we're talking about the five-year life of the contract. So it doesn't matter. As long as it, as long as they're staying within the grade.
But they usually specify their rollout, I thought, whatever.
Not in the contract, in the application they do.
I thought we, we talked to them about their rollout during the contract negotiation.
Up in some of the negotiations.
We talk about it, but it's not hardwired into the contract as to you have to do K1 the first year, as long as people know, budget knows, and you folks know. But yeah, it's the, they can't deviate from the, the, the grades from their application that's in the contract. They can't deviate from that and say, oh, we're adding a seventh grade to this elementary school. That they can't do.
Yeah. I just, from what I recall is that they specified their rollout. If they were doing a rollout, they specified what that rollout looked like over that five-year period. They saw what that was going to be.
Where in the contract?
We just don't have a place that.
I don't think that's in the contract.
You do it in the application, but then it can change.
I do, I think one place I do know it happens every once in a while is in the mission goals. Like every once in a while you'll have like kind of rollout built into that. So, but they can apply, or sorry. Um, I think if it ends up changing, they can still submit a, a mission goal amendment change. You know, to be like, okay, we're not, not doing kinder through second, we're only doing kinder to first. So we're not going to be able to do this. But, and I think that's how you still do it. But I don't think anywhere else, the rollout is in the, I do know every, I think every contract negotiation of a new school, it's always been discussed, like what's your plan? What does it look like? And it is in their application concretely, but I don't think there's a place in the contract that puts them into it, like that locks them into it to where they can't just change it without a contract. Like they don't need a contract amendment to change their rollout.
Should we be concerned that they're changing their rollout?
I wouldn't. I want maximum flexibility.
Because it, it could simply be, we just didn't get enough kids for this grade and, but we got more for this grade. So we decided to have two second grades and that'll feed it in. It's, you know, to me, it, it would be a concern if they greatly under, if they greatly overprojected. It's like, and, and they still hadn't, you know, if they said, we're going to get 60 kids and we only got 20, to me, that's a concern.
Well, I guess what would be weird to me is if we had, okay, say they're going to do K through four, right? Let's make that up. But say they don't get any students in second and third. And now they're doing K1 and four. So it, to me, you're having some weird inconsistencies in the rollout if you don't get students in, or second and third.
I think charter school rollouts are weird. They start in weird buildings. They start in weird places. They start with weird teachers. They start with weird kids. They start with weird parents. I mean, I think year one charter, year two, year three, it's all, like, I do think it is unusual. Like there are some very unusual circumstances that they have to kind of accommodate. And so that's why for me, I'm like, I allow, like for, I want it to be maximum flexibility. So that they're not locked into doing something unnatural in order to fit in a box and allowing them to do what's best for what, because you're right. I mean, there's some wonky things that's, like when charters start, they do weird stuff. Um, but I, like, I think from, from my perspective is, I think our, our, our job is to just entrust that that school leader and that governing board in particular are making decisions that's based off of what's best for the kids and the community that they're serving.
Are, are we setting them up for success by not holding their feet to the fire though?
I don't think that's, I, I think if they open K1 and four, I think that's fine. I don't see a problem with opening K1 and four because then you just add second, when your first graders move to second grade, you add them. When your fourth graders move to fifth grade, you add that, that grade, that you add that teacher then. So I think the build outs, so I mean, it maybe doesn't happen in the linear way they thought it would, but it still happens.
Concern that I would have is if they wanted to combine grades in classrooms.
Which would be a contract amendment. Yeah. Because that's, that is in their contract. So they would have to come to us with, with that. They don't get to do that without notifying the PEC. That is contemplated in the contract.
And I think that's where school, but if, if there's a concern about sustainability, to me, that's the conversation that school budget has to have with them and say, you're not going to be, you know, you may make it this year, but you know, how are you going to, that's not our conversation. That's, you know, which I don't think they have. But that's another story.
Can I ask, are there objections to us collecting that? Because it's, it isn't.
Absolutely not. No.
Because we do.
I actually think it highlights that. It exposes what KT's saying, that if they're going to roll out in this like kind of wonky, weird way, at least we know in advance that like.
Yeah. Because that is more likely that we have somebody who says, we're going to, we're going to do, we're going to do a K1, four. And then they're like, oh, we got so many seconds and thirds, we're going to have them too. But then that becomes a, an internal PED problem that we just, we need to have that information so that we can.
Because that's in the May one is when you're asking for that?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, that may, and that way it gives them that couple of times. And if, if you all then have a, a major concern, that can then be brought to the commission in May instead of July, you know, when they're trying to open. Sam?
So just for my clarification, it's, when do they, when is the drop dead deadline for them? Excuse me, to decide what their rollout is. So like, are they able to kidnap kids all the way up until, right? School opens or do they have until the budget is, I've just, so it would seem to me to be, have that aligned? So when they have that deadline, because if they give us a plan, that says, this is our rollout plan in May. And then they're like, but we're still scrambling to get kids. Do we hold them to that? Or do we say, you can still go on and kidnap kids until, you know, school opens?
What does that look like?
So the real deadline is school budget. By June 30th, school budget approves their budget. So they would not be, June 30th.
And the consequence would be that it gets, if they've got more students or less students than they, than they said, that school budget, they said, they said the school budget, we have 200 students in these grades. And then they have 150 students in those grades. That doesn't get right-sided until 40-day. But it also, the same with going the other direction. If they've added, if, if they've added a grade that they didn't tell school budget about, they're not going to get that SEG until, and so it's trying to help them to understand, like, you have to be as accurate as possible.
Right. And so June 30th, all budgets have to be approved by June 30th. But realistically, they can't approve 880 budgets on, on June 30th. So they, they need to do it in the weeks leading up to it. And if they do, if they, if they're in enrollment increases, increases, it can be adjusted up to 40th day. Except if, like if they, if they applied to be a K12 school and PEC authorized K12 and they told budget they were going to start with K5, and then they decided to start with K8, then they've got a problem because they've got seventh and eighth graders who have secondary school funding, which is a dip, like if it's, if they're adding seven and eight and school budget doesn't know, it creates a lot of problems.
All right. Anything else on this? So this will come back up next month. Um, and, but we are expecting to put it on for a vote as well next month, um, to have it ready for these schools as they start it.
I have a question about school budget. Do, do they, are they just strictly, um, going off of numbers only? This, this is the number here, this is the number here, uh, per student or whatever it might be. But they're not in any way thinking qualitatively about can this be done with this amount of, uh, kids, teachers, curriculum, whatever it might be.
So it is, it is strictly numbers. It's, 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 but it's not just numbers of students overall. It's numbers of students with number of special ed students, number of gifted students, number, you know, because there's, there's funding differentials. Um, if, if the school, but they do, the school does have to say, you know, how many FTEs? How many, you know, if, if school budget looks at, say a school only has an enrollment of eight kids and that, that it just can't even cover their, their staff that they're proposing, school budget will look at that.
Well, but I think it's interesting that you chose the number eight because I asked former, former, uh, school budget director, you know, what's the number? How many students does a new school need to be able to be successful? Thinking that he was going to, you know, like how much money do you need your SEG to generate? $300,000? Like how much? And, and he said eight. We're statutorily obliged to fund any school with at least eight students. I'm like, okay, that wasn't my question, but thank you for that. So eight is the minimum number of students that will be, so that they're not quantitatively, they're just looking at numbers.
But the statute, I think the statute actually says elementary school.
All right. Any other questions about the IY checklist proposed? All right. Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Director Russell. All right. Next item, item eight, uh, discussion of subcommittee processes from Commissioner Carrillo and Commissioner Gibson. So I'm going to hand it over to them.
Before we move on, are we planning to approve this tomorrow? Or we're still going, okay, next month. Okay. Gotcha.
Uh, Commissioner Carrillo or Commissioner Gibson?
It's interesting when we, um, because, uh, you know, Commissioner, Chair Burden and I have gone around and around those because I like the idea. I like it when all nine of us are together and we're meeting and discussing things and hashing things out and everything else. I really enjoy that. And I think we learn a lot about each other. We get a lot done. Constituents see the sausage being made. And, um, and to me, that, you know, that's a good thing. And I, I'm recalling earlier today when we talked about the, uh, um, the strategic plan, the commitment that if we were going to have a subcommittee for strategic planning, that it absolutely positively reports out every month as to what they're working on, how's it going, what issues might they have? So commissioners as a whole can completely weigh in on the entire process. And I, if, I would like, if we're going to continue with subcommittees, I would want that kind of, you know, vigilance in terms of what's going on with each subcommittee. I would want those kinds of reports on a monthly basis. I mean, right now, I couldn't even tell you, it would seem to me like there's going to be a dozen things that the policy subcommittee is working on. I have no idea where they stand, no idea what the goal is. Um, it just, and I'm not alone in that. In terms of what I would say would be a lack of information about what's going on behind the scenes. And I'm, I'm not comfortable with all the behind the scenes stuff. Um, I remember in one of our, uh, meetings, there was something I brought up, oh, the 10-day thing. Um, and this, this comes up also because of Collins, um, Lake School and even others. If somebody wants to open a small school, that 10-day, not 10-day, the, um, 10% cap, it pretty much eliminates any small district or rural area from ever having the advantages of a charter. Anywhere. It's, it's like Mr. KT in your district, although eastern side of the state, you'll never have a charter. Because it, I mean, it's just, and that's not right. That cheats kids. But when I brought it up, um, it was like, well, let's, let's take that right away over here to legislative. And it's like, no, 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 no. Let's discuss it as a group first to see if we even want it to go in that direction. So that's my concern with the subcommittee process and also the extent to which information is. So that's my concern with the subcommittee process and also the extent to which information is consistently, um, uh, brought to the commission. Those are my initial comments. And I'll just say that I thought it was worth a discussion. We're three, four months into doing this. I agree, I mean, doing the legislative subcommittee, and we did talk about this, E C, that 10%. It's like, well, before the legislative subcommittee spends any time working on something and making a recommendation, I want to know if, if that's something the commission wants to move forward on. So I work from the perspective that if this is something that the commission want, anything that we're working on, if it's something that the commission wants work on, not for it to go to subcommittee necessarily first, and the subcommittee come back and say, hey, we've been working on this, what do you all think? I, you know, I prefer the input and say, hey, this, and I prefer commission's input to the direction they want that subcommittee to go in. So that the subcommittee has some guidelines as to the direction they're, they're going to be working on to make the recommendation, to come back to make the recommendation.
Commissioner Beck, then Commissioner Taylor, then Commissioner Manus.
Uh, so I'm slightly confused. I'm looking at the, um, document that's for eight, which is the subcommittee assignments. And that kind of spells out under each subcommittee what they sent to the P C pending in terms of that. If that was updated on a, on a monthly basis, that would inform everybody.
Yeah, so.
So, so there's two things with that. Number one, um, we have that as a, a, a written document that can be put out the week before, so everybody knows. And then, of course, you have right down here under number 10, the subcommittee updates, which is also verbally done. So I'm confused, is, is, so there's, there's this confusion between the validity of what we put into the work session, what the work session is versus what the subcommittee does. And I agree with, um, uh, Vice Chair, um, uh, Gibson, that there shouldn't be any surprise. Oh, my God, what, what is this subcommittee working on? Nobody in the commission even knew about it. The commission should be directing the subcommittee in terms of what they're doing. That's the first step, in my opinion, being, doing that. And then the subcommittee takes it and, um, thank you, Commissioner Odenchain for taking over from me because, uh, you are doing a 10 times better job than I could ever even think of doing, uh, because you know this stuff. Uh, and you dig into the detail that I don't even understand in many cases. Um, uh, so I don't, we'll get you everywhere. So, so that type of work that we, the policy subcommittee and the, uh, charter performance, the, the performance framework committee, whatever we call that, um, I, I, I view that as work that's very detailed, that, that would make the work session be three days long. Um, so I think the functioning of that and the way that it's working, and now the ability, the first time I've seen a document like this. I think this is wonderful. Um, this document here that, that highlights it works. And as I said, and meant by previous business worlds, um, was done in the subcommittee. I mean, really, for the most part, uh, because there is a lot of attention to detail in that. So I think that if, if we're, I, I think the amount of work within a work session specifically, not the meeting, but the work session, is a tail wagging the dog. I mean, some, some, some days will have a whole day of subcommittee until six o'clock or, uh, committee, uh, work session until six o'clock, seven, seven o'clock. Some sessions, it might be two hours. So it's a function of the work of the subcommittee that brings what the commission drove to them back into, uh, the, the, uh, work session that determines that. There's, there's no kind of determination, oh, we should have this long of a work session. That's, that, that is truly the tail wagging the dog.
Commissioner Taylor, then Commissioner Manus.
So I, I mean, I feel like in this, uh, just preliminary discussion that we're towards sort of a consensus on how this needs to happen. This is, this is a new, newer process for this commission, all right? So there are details that need to be, you know, dealt. Topic, issue is brought, sent to subcommittee. Absolutely, we need to, as a commission, kind of direct that, right? Um, and then, right here, I'm telling the subcommittee updates, right? So work session time is going to be eased to, um, to refer to subcommittee and re, uh, refine and discuss reports from subcommittee, right? Um, because the commission is the one that was the final, I'm sorry, I don't know all those things. But I, I like the, I think, like, like I said, I think we're leaning towards, uh, a consensus in subcommittee needs to do the, the, the down and dirty. And sort of come up with some of the details and then come up and say, hey, but that doesn't preclude the, the commission from saying, no, that's not, that's not, I, I feel like it works better this way. All right, so it goes back to subcommittee and they come up. So I, I, I like the, I like the idea of the process. But we've got to recognize that it's new for us and we're just kind of working through the details. So it's not a big deal as far as that goes.
Commissioner Manus, then Commissioner Gibson.
So, uh, thinking about, you know, I'm on NIPSE and we have two, uh, subcommittees similar to, seems like P S E O C. Um, and a lot of work is, is done in the subcommittees. Um, and it's kind of like our work session, if you will, uh, the day before our actual meeting. So that's kind of how the process works. Ours usually only lasts about two hours, these subcommittee meetings, but they're every month, right? Um, so I think the subcommittee meetings are vital to get the, the day to day work done or this nitty gritty details. Um, but, you know, from the, um, and it's probably, um, additional work or, uh, requires a lot of repetition for those who are in the subcommittee. But we get like a high level summarized version, but it's a lengthy. I mean, we're probably getting at least 30 minutes of, okay, what, the same presenters who presented in the subcommittee, they come and give us a high level report of what, of what was presented in that subcommittee. So it's not like the full board isn't hearing what was talked about, right? We are talking about benefits, we're talking about risks. They give us the full financial implications of what was discussed in that. So nobody's really missing the high level details that people are voting on. And so, and we have, right, there's action items that the subcommittee is saying, okay, we approve this action item in subcommittee. And what occurs is they're saying, okay, the subcommittee recommends approval of this particular item, right? Whenever they go to the full board. So at that point, it's then, okay, now the full board is voting for approval or denial of these motions, right? So I think for me, what would be helpful is getting more of, more detailed information in terms of, okay, what is happening in these meetings? Is it a, is it a split vote among the subcommittee as far as what directions wanted to go on? And then if we're talking about something that's major, that's going to be impacting the commission, that this should be an action item, that we either are going to, like we talked about gaining the consensus this morning. I think whether we're gaining consensus to go one direction versus another. And so it might be even, I had put subcommittee updates and input from the commission instead of just saying updates from, uh, subcommittee updates, right? Because I think every subcommittee update should require input from the commission and there should be something that we should be saying, okay, we're leaning more this way, leaning more that way, or we just don't care, right? That this stuff doesn't even matter to us as a commission. So, um, just thinking about that process of what, what we do every month with NIPSE that similarly, because it's same thing, the risk advisory committee doesn't want to sit on everything the benefits advisory committee sits on and vice versa, right? There's two separate functions. And obviously, all the board members can't sit through everything, right? So that's my perspective on it.
Commissioner Gibson?
And I think you're right. I think the process, and I, and I'll admit guilt in our own responsibility for, I think, some of the reporting out. You know, that it's like, oh, yeah, the budget subcommittee met and da, 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 da. And I don't think it's as detailed as it should be, you know? And I know every commissioner has the opportunity to go into the folders and see the agendas. I don't know whether, I, you know, that's, I get it. It's, it's, sometimes it's hard to navigate through those folders. Um, I think, that's why I think this conversation is important because it's like, okay, how can we make the process better? Because that's, you know, that's hopefully what we want to do, is to make things better and, um, always transparent. So I think for subcommittees that I have responsibility for, to be clearer and, um, and maybe have something in right, you know, put something on the agenda so that a commissioner can say, wait a minute, why are you talking about that? Or I didn't, you know, I didn't know that's exactly what that was, that was going to be, that there's a more. I know that anything that the subcommittees come forward with, that there's going to be a vote on, that absolutely has been placed on as an action item and discussed. But I think those things that are more in the future, that could be an action item, but we're still working on it. I think greater clarity as to what the direction is by that subcommittee. I, I think we can, you know, we can be better at, at that for sure.
Well, and I don't think it should be, I don't think it has to be the commissioner, that whoever's the lead on it has to present. I think whoever, right, there's a C S D staff liaison, right? That they present the meeting minutes because there's no board member that's presenting the different things that are happening from the back or the rack. It's whoever is owning that item, they're the ones who are talking about it. And that, the onus isn't on you anymore. The onus is on who is the liaison to report, what did, what did the committee discuss? Um, what were the things that were, right, actionable or near future? And I think that's where, instead of you having to prepare the reporter, whoever the, the lead is, that it should be whoever the C S D staff liaison is. That may be more work for them, right? But that, the onus is, okay, that's their role in the process.
Right, but I don't think we've, I, I think it's still ultimately, it would be my responsibility to make sure that they're ready to do that.
Right.
And I, and the only, the only thing I'm going to say is there is one subcommittee that we do not have, and that's the legislative. We don't have a C S D staff person assigned to that. And I think we, and that was because of the prior. So I think it's something we can look at, but we, we didn't want someone from P E D on that in particular. But I, I, I agree with you that it's not, it wouldn't necessarily be me that would have to do all of that. But the buck stops with me to make sure that they're ready for that so that it's, it's done at the meeting appropriately.
Commissioner Carrillo, then Commissioner Odenchain.
So I'm, excuse me, so I'm glad we're having the discussion. I agree with, uh, with KT and with Patty kind of fundamentally, yes. I mean, the subcommittee can do kind of the guts of drilling down and some work. And I look to the, um, I don't know, the one thing that was just here, record of performance process. Um, I mean, I think I'm looking at the right one, but, um, oh, what's the one we had, that really beautiful chart from the other day? But anyway, uh, I like that. I like the, the thing I was concerned about more is that things are funneled. For me, they seem to be funneled too quickly without the commission having any kind of say so. Because there might be something that was like, you know, something, we don't want anyone spending any time on this. Uh, let's like move on and, you know, the commission can discuss these things before they're an upping committee. Or the, um, it's that piece and then the reporting out. Those are the two things I really felt discomfort with. Um, having reporting out on a regular basis and more thorough, that's what it is for me.
Commissioner Odenchain.
Yeah, I think so, um, that concept of funneling, um, I'm not really clear about how that happens anyway. So I mean, I think that some clarity around that is a good thing. Um, because I don't know, I don't know how these things have, you know, dropped into policy. Um, and then for sure on reporting out, um, I would say that, yeah, I'm, um, Commissioner Beck, I am not up to speed on exactly what the expectation is from the commission with regard to my report outs from the policy committee meeting, so, um, subcommittee. So I think clarity around those things, those two things are great. I don't, I don't think the concept of the subcommittee is faulty. I just think those, maybe, um, a little more clarity around those two pieces would solve the concern.
Great. Um, that's not how I was treated when this was brought up. It was throw the baby out with the bathwater. So I do appreciate the other commissioners for being considerate of how to improve the process and not just throw it away. Um, the way that, I mean, mostly, when this started a couple of months ago, there's a bunch of work that's been on Julia's to do list. Like Julie has been keeping a long to do list of all the things that the commission has asked to happen. So that is how the first assignments were created, was the, the very long to do list of things that were just kind of stagnating over the last year. We just sorted them into the subcommittees as they came. When the first new item came, you're correct. My thought was, let's get on this, let's get it to some, to do it quick, which is oftentimes what I hear the most loudly is that we should do things very fast. And so I, that was the initial thought was, okay, yeah, let's get it to a subcommittee, let's get it going. As, as an E C, we talked about it. They said, actually, let's bring this to the commission first. Oh, you're right, correct, let's go in and do that. And then I got reprimanded heavily in my, in our meetings. So, thank you, correct, we, like, I, I can now go back, I can write. I didn't think we needed to write like a policy and formalize anything, that was on me. Um, I can create a very formal process for this, um, that we can follow to create clarity. Um, I do think it's still appropriate that it comes to the E C. The E C then puts it on the agenda for the whole commission to do. If it's something so small that C S D brings forward and we can just manage it, I don't see why we hold it. Like for me, holding it for a month to get onto the P E C meeting and then get to a commit, to a committee for something like the, that form change that we just did, seems inappropriate. So I do think as the E C, we've, I thought we were doing a good job of kind of determining where to go. Um, so I appreciate it. I'll, I will create an intro process and then I will create a formalized process for reporting into templates so that C S D staff knows exactly, or the, not C S D staff, because it's sometimes Julia, sometimes it's a commissioner that's going to be reporting. I'll create a template for how to create a new item to be proposed to the commission. And I will create a template for a, um, how to report as well. I didn't think we needed that, um, but I, I get it now. Eric Beck, and then Commissioner Manus, then Commissioner Carrillo.
I mean, I, I think the template for what you have here in document eight for the subcommittees is excellent. I think.
That's been there the whole time, so that's, that's the frustration is.
Right.
I thought we create, I created something to create the transparency and I was wrong, so I can do more.
Yeah, but, no, I, I think that's fine if, if we could add maybe a little detail to, to it, which is what we were talking about with, uh, C S D of the staff member or something like that, that's great. like that, that's great. But that basically tells, keeps everybody highly informed of what it is. And then you can, again, I'm number 10 here, discussion, and I think that's all we need. I don't think it's, I don't, I mean, I don't think this is real rocket science or brain surgery. I think this will keep everybody informed, and as you move from pending to sent, then it just rotates. It's fine, and you got the template right here.
Commissioner Manas, then Commissioner Creo?
I think, for me, I have not looked at this template, honestly, since we had it. Maybe it's been in the Google Drive, but I, this is my first time, like, probably looking at it. And if that's what the committee chairs have been like reading off of, I have not known that. So that's news to me. And, but it's fine. My, my thought is that more detail might be better on some things, like you said. I think I would probably venture to say, understanding some of the committee thought process behind certain things, instead of just saying, okay, this is what we recommend. I would like to know, like, why you're recommending that? What is, how did you get there?
For clarity, there's been, there hasn't been that many things that have come up since we started this.
Right, no.
So when I, when I think of like, one of the biggest ones of like, a new thing that came up through committee that, once again, the PEC wanted, a subcommittee went through the process and then presented, for me, it was the expedited renewal. When that expedited renewal was presented, what was wrong? Like, what was the information everyone was not, was not getting? Got, right. So that, to me, that I, I'm trying to pinpoint, I really, this is, and this is a conversation.
It's through, so nothing gets through.
Nothing gets through.
Into.
Yes. I do think what I hear is, and what came up, but once again, I thought we were able to work through it, but it's fine, and I'm okay with creating a better transparency on it, is when a new item is introduced, what that looks like. So how does a new item get introduced and how does it go through the process? I'm ha, I wrote it last night at midnight, I didn't feel like it was appropriate to give it to you guys right away, because I only found out about this being an issue last week, so I've had other things to do since then. But I did stay up and come up with a quick little intro for how to get an item introduced and into the process, very simple, very easy. I don't think that's difficult to change. I can, we can easily just integrate that into this. Once again, I appreciate you all, this is a different way of doing business than we've done before. I do think it's a more appropriate, efficient way to do business, and it includes more commissioners. So I will help refine that intro process where there's complete clarity. And then in addition, I even thought about like, well, what if the EC is like, you know what, we don't think that this is right? Because I do think part of the EC part is, is this the role of the PEC to be doing this, right? If it is, as long as it's part of the role, not the merits of the proposal, but just like, are we in our own lane? It should be sent to, for consideration, right? If, if the EC is like, no, we don't think that we should be doing this, the commissioner always, always has the opportunity to get a second and get it on the agenda the next month. I mean, that is, there is never a gate, there is not, we do not have a system where there is a gatekeeper for anything, because two commissioners can put absolutely anything on the agenda, ever, always. So that's also, like, I can build that into it as like the kind of rebuttal process if any commissioner proposes something and then it kind of gets stalled. There, I don't want there to be gatekeepers on a topic. So I'm going to write that into the policy that if the, whoever, you know, the EC is like, no, for some reason, that that commissioner then can bring it forward to the whole commission to vote on.
So with the intro process that you're saying, are you referring to like, our brainstorming as a commission? Okay.
Yeah, that, that.
Okay, it goes to.
Idea. A commissioner has a new idea. I want to look at anything, right? Like, I went to this, I went to the conference and I think we should, okay, I'm going to use my example. I went to the conference, when I went to last October, I saw the, a framework for growing and expanding schools. And I was like, I would love the commission to consider that. So let's say I hadn't brought that forward yet, right? I just found out about it. In, in my idea, which I will happily present to you all next month, to where you can see it in black and white and writing, I, not as chair, but I was just a regular commissioner, I would submit the proposal up to, to the EC to say, hey, I want the commission to talk about it. The EC looks at it, says, okay, yep, that's in the scope of the PEC. So we're going to put it on the agenda to see, on the work session, to see if the commission wants to move forward to look at that. The commission then considers the top, which is what we've done, and this is literally how we've always done it. Nothing, none of this has changed. So once again, nothing has actually changed. I don't, I'm very confused by this item, but, so the whole commission looks at it, says, yep, we want to do it. And then the chair or the EC combined, look and say, okay, yep, well, let's either create a subcommittee like we just did, like, we'll, we'll create a strategic plan subcommittee now, or say, you know what, I know exactly where this can go, it can go into that sub, and now we assign it to the subcommittee. And they alert that chair and the staffer and say, hey, this is on your subcommittee's plate now. When that subcommittee then goes through, they have, will have heard the commission talk about it, right? The commission will already have had the first conversation, now the subcommittee comes up with a recommendation. That's, that's it, that's the whole process.
And it's, and it's documented through this document.
I, I know, I'm just making sure Commissioner Manas is done, because that was.
Yeah, I, I just think of like, the performance framework, how much time that took. I like that the, that while there was a lot of work done on subcommittee, it was a regular process that we also covered during work sessions, and I think that level of involvement is still important. Not, not saying that, right, that shouldn't change.
None of this changed, anything. None of that changed.
I think, right now, if we're just going based off the template, there's not a lot of, like, I'm not getting a lot of insight as to what exactly is going on.
And you're correct, I think that's, that was the reporting style that people were choosing as they reported.
Right.
And also the level of questions that commissioners were asking about those reports.
At some point, I don't know what to ask if I'm, if I have limited information, you know what I mean?
Commissioner Creo?
So first off, I really apologize if it felt like I wanted to throw the baby out with the bathwater. And I apologize, because it is a good idea, subcommittees do work, you've put a lot of work into this, you have a lot of great ideas relative to this. Well, I apologize if that's the way it felt. The concerns were exactly what Patty and KT, the idea is the reporting out. It, I don't know how others felt, but I, you don't know what question to ask if something is not being reported out sometimes. For me, the more, the more the commission gets to interact with a topic or a subject, the better. The better for us and the better for all the people that we serve, like I say, to see the sausage being made. But my, my challenge, and you've addressed this, my challenge was the reporting out, for us to be more thorough in different areas, if we have information, so, you know, commissioner can say, wait a minute, if, if, what's holding you up on this? What, what, when you guys get together, what's like the big sticking point? You know, so someone here could ask that question, and then maybe we can help, you know, push it forward or whatever. And then you've addressed the issue of getting things on, there's, or that we, that any two people at any time can get something on to the, to work session to discuss. It just felt like certain things were being pushed through without necessarily enough conversation among the commission. And I'm glad we're discussing this. I mean, I think it's great for us to assess our processes, and, because you're not going to be chair forever. I don't think you want to be chair forever. But so, I don't want you to have to develop new templates and new procedures and all these different things. I, I'm right there with KT, and kind of, I'm ashamedly admit, it's the first time I've looked at this, this template here. I don't know if anyone else wants to cop to that either, but it is. And so, and I appreciate the work that goes into this. And, but I feel like the concerns that I had have been addressed, and I think it's important for us to sometimes just go back and say, how are we doing? If anyone has a concern about how we're working on something that may not work for them, or they might not have enough information on, I mean, I would hope that somebody would feel like they can bring something up. And, thank you.
Commissioner King, then Commissioner Taylor.
I just want to say how blessed I am with this commission, and how transparent we are, and how we give an effort to do that. I am going to say it is refreshing. I had no idea what serving on a commission would be like, or a committee, I didn't know the difference. But I'm going to tell you, there's a vast difference between a commission and a committee. And the committee I serve is not, in my mind, transparent. It is, things happen and it gets just, I, I'm sure there's stuff going on under the table that dictates policy, and it's a, a big deal. And, and for me to bring something up and just ask for a, a thing at the thing and get shut down, is kind of disappointing to me, that the chair can basically say, you know what, I don't want to do that. And, and so, what I'm going to say is, you guys, thank you. This is a really beautiful commission, and I am thrilled to be a part of it.
Commissioner Taylor, then Commissioner Manas.
Yeah, I, I agree, great, great discussion on this today, really. Great discussion. I feel like, I, I feel like the purpose of, of subcommittees is to be the workhorses, basically, right? I, I feel like, so, that we have to be able to sort of turn loose of some of those things that we can speak ad nauseam about sometimes during our, during our sessions, you know? And so I think we, as a commission, are, again, we, we've done great work, y'all have done great work, but I also think that so often, we can get down a rabbit hole or be distracted by the squirrel, and, and we, we use, we use a lot of anecdotal stories, and all of that is okay, but I think it's, I think it's, it's purposeful to, to get the input of the commission, take it to subcommittee, when they come with recommendations, we can always say, ah, that's not how I, that's not how I envisioned it. And then, then, then it's a discussion, and then we all vote on it, you know, prior to becoming policy. So I mean, to me, we've got to be able to trust those that are in those subcommittees to, to be earnest and work towards the, the goal of the, the commission at large, and for charter schools and kids, you know, most importantly. Certainly, the, the, this is, like I said, great discussion today. This is not, this is not a matter of creating offense to anyone, I don't think, you know, we've got to be able to, to hash this stuff out and, and, and come to, you know, to a conclusion. But I guess my point is, is that, by, by referring to, to a subcommittee, hey, we're giving you the task, do it earnestly, and we have to be able to trust that process, and then come back as a commission and, and make final decisions, so.
Commissioner Manas?
Yeah, I think trust is a big thing in the process, right? We have to trust our fellow commissioners to be able to carry out what the commission has in mind. And I think the interim check-ins are, are key to us to maintain that course and not get distracted by the squirrel, like you said. I like that analogy. One question I had is, aren't most of the meetings via Zoom, right? Or some other type of mode, online mode? What precludes from, us from having the meeting, subcommittee meetings recorded and available for, for any commissioner who wants to watch in the future, to be able to pull it up and watch it? And then the other thing that I thought about with that is, if you're recording with, with Zoom, there's the AI companion. I don't know if anybody's used the AI companion, but I, I, I love the AI companion. I started using it just this past week. But you can choose different templates on how you want it to put out your summary. And so you can choose, like I was playing around with it, there's, you get literally one by one information that it summarizes each topic that's discussed in the meeting. So I think that there's some ways to minimize work for whoever the CSD staff liaison is, or whoever the chair of the subcommittee is, that it might make it easier to use some of these tools that are already provided. So those were my two thoughts. EC, yeah, for sure, I could see that. I was thinking for subcommittees, it could be helpful and make it easier, instead of having to do it from scratch.
Wondering about that is if people aren't even reading the documents that are already in there, reading the basic stuff, are people really, like, to do all this work, to record all these, is anybody going to actually, like, let's be practical, are people going to sit there and watch subcommittee meetings?
You never know who in the public might be interested in.
So that's what, they're not public meetings. They're not public meetings.
The subcommittee isn't a public meeting?
So we'd have to live in our folder, but that would be hard, because it's not, we don't want it something that could be.
No, you can't have it anywhere on our.
Because they're not, it's not.
And, and please don't take this the wrong way, I, I don't mean this to sound the wrong way, but we have to trust that the subcommittee people are, are doing what they have to do, and then they do report back. They report back exactly what, what they talked about, what we've done for like an hour, or two hours or three hours, we will come back to you with a specific, you know, 10-minute or whatever, you know, analysis of what we talked about.
I think that's where the lack of clarity has been, though, is we haven't gotten.
We've just discussed that we're going to be more clear in terms of what we're going to do.
Right, yeah, I get that.
And I also, I mean, when I was writing through, like, thinking, I'm like, okay, what do I need to clarify for this? Like, and I, you know, when I thought about it, I'm like, you know, I feel like if, if I was concerned about a subcommittee that I wasn't on, number one, every subcommittee has an opening, just so everyone knows. If you're concerned about a subcommittee, join it, and don't complain about the people on it, join it. The other thing is, every, you can just be a human and call the chair of that subcommittee and talk to them. If you're concerned, if you're like, I don't understand what's going on, what's happening, pick up the phone and call. Like, if I need to call Sam and be like, hey, I'm not on policy subcommittee, I don't understand what's going on, ask him.
But also, if you're.
I'm also, that was, that was something that was very difficult.
I have zero concern about any of the subcommittees, other than the report out. I, I don't, like, there's too limited information to know.
That's what I'm, I hear you. We're already going to update the reports, but I'm saying if someone, if someone's saying that that's because, the reason we want to do recording and we want to be able to see what the subcommittee's doing is because you're worried about the subcommittee, ask, just ask.
And also, there, if you want to, just, if you want to attend one, even though you're not a member, you know, you can, and something really piques your interest, like, if something like the MOU thing with the policy, something like that, just in the meeting, you can do it.
Nothing piques my interest.
Fine, that.
I hear you.
The subcommittees is to allow folks who don't have the space and time to do the additional work, to not have, like, they are opt-in, they are not requirements, you know, like, no one's forcing anyone to do anything, but we are getting a lot of work done really quickly already. Like, a lot has already happened just in the couple months that we've been doing this. All right, anything before we wrap up?
Just, the limit is, we can't have more than four.
More than five.
More than five.
More than five.
We can have five. Six is the quorum.
Yeah, because that's what.
Is six, correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
That is the quorum of the.
Later, can you?
Sam?
I'll just finish with this, I'm really nervous about my subcommittee report out.
Yeah, these are going to be terrible this month, okay. All right, um, next one, discussion and input to executive committee regarding protocol of PEC work session and meeting schedules. So very quickly, we just need the commission, this, this item came up because I had suggested we combine work session and meeting into one day. I know we've been doing that a couple different times, we don't do that consulting, the whole commission, we've done it as a EC, so. So we wanna get the whole commission's input as to whether you guys wanna keep having two days, no matter what? If you want to do, like, if it looks like the workload is less to do one or if there's a certain threshold you guys wanna, like, help consider to where we can decide. Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, I, I'll go back to that.
Geez, real quick before I do, because I wanna make sure Commissioner Creo, Commissioner Gibson, if there's anything you wanna add that I left out.
Yeah, so I'm gonna add for me, um, that wasn't, the issue is, the issue is more a combined day where we end at five or six o'clock at night. That's where I kind of draw the line because then I'm not getting home until 10 o'clock at night. So that, um, you know, I don't mind combining when there's, when it looks like it's short days. I mean, but, um, I struggle with staying here until five or six o'clock at night on Friday and then being able to get home. I can't get home at a reasonable time. And for me, when I originally created my schedule, I created it for a Wednesday night and a Thursday night, not a Friday night. And I personally, I struggle with Saturdays because I've got commitments with folks that, you know, are only available on Saturdays, organizations that I belong to. So like this Saturday, I have an eight o'clock meeting with, with the group. So that it's, I can't make that shift at, at this moment in time.
All right, Commissioner Creo, then Commissioner Beck.
So this came up in the reason it's also here. My feeling was that, um, we need two days, but if it's, if it's a short session, it doesn't have to be at nine. I mean, it can be at noon or it can be at one if we think it's gonna be short. I mean, even right now, there was the discussion of whether or not we needed to have a separate work session today. And we're already at, you know, three hours and 15 minutes and not having had any breaks at all or whatever. So let's say we did end up combining this with tomorrow's. It would be one of those days where probably Patty would get out at maybe five or six. Um, the, um, I mean, and I know I live 10 minutes away, okay? I know that. And probably if I lived four hours away or further, I don't know that I, um, signed up for this. Albuquerque, probably, uh, but really far away, probably not. And, um, but I just think that we, you know, in signing up for this, it's like two days. This is what I was told. The third, Thursday and Friday of every month, you need to be available. This is when we do our work. And I liken us also, and if it's a short day, then it's a short day. You know, go to the park, go sit by the Oreo and read a book. The, um, I just love that you shake your head so adamantly when I'm talking. The, um, so I view us as like the legislature. Education committee meets on Wednesday at eight o'clock. Now granted, once that, you know, they have their times that they meet. This is when they meet. This is when, uh, schools, our constituents, all of these people can count on us. They can tune in, they know that we're going to be there, they can come here if they feel like they need to and things aren't gonna be whackadoo all the time. Um, I like the consistency of it. Um, and also for planning in terms of what Patty was saying. I like being able to say, you know, no matter what, I'm not scheduling any work appointments on Thursday or Friday. I'm just not. And if I, we end early, that's great. I can just sit on my phone and do other things.
I, I'm kinda refer back to what I talked about where at the very beginning of the other one. Uh, just making sure we're not, the tail's not wagging the dog. Um, I, I think, solution, let the EC decide it. You know, if the EC feels that, that, you know, it's gonna be a three, four hour process and boy, I understand Patty altogether, I definitely get that especially in January and February. Some interesting weather in the state. Um, so I, I, I definitely understand that piece, but I think this is real simple. Let the EC decide, decide that. You know, we already have it planned out in the calendar for the two days. Um, that's already there. Um, but if the EC decides that, you know, there's just not a lot on the docket and stuff like that, then it's up to them to make, make that move. I, I, I think this is pretty simple.
Commissioner Manas?
Um, so I like Commissioner Creo's suggestion if we're doing a half day, um, that could move to the afternoon. I know that, right, with NIPSE, sometimes our meeting only lasts an hour on Thursdays or should say Wednesdays, uh, because that's when our quote unquote work session is. Um, and people still drive to Albuquerque to attend it, right? For the hour session. So, um, my thought is that if we're having a shorter work session, that an afternoon might be okay for people, especially they, like Patty and I, we wouldn't have to stay overnight. We could drive that morning if we wanted to. Um, but having it on, everything on Friday, um, especially whenever there's so many unknowns with our work sessions sometimes, that, that can make it very long. And, um, you know, I'm not always a present in person, I know Patty is more than me, but, um, I've come to a point where when booking my reservation, I wait until the very last minute because I don't know, right? And I don't wanna be stuck with a bill for Wednesday night if I can't change it, right? If it's non-refundable. So that's another, uh, consideration because most of these hotels, if I'm trying to get the best rate, it's gonna be a non-refundable rate, you know what I mean? So that's, for me, it's, it's hard because I don't wanna eat the 200 bucks. Uh, and I'm sure, yeah, Mike, well, that's the thing is, a, a lot of these hotels around, around downtown, to get the best rate, it's gonna be, for us to be able to even meet the 215 requirement, you gotta get the, not, I know we don't, you gotta ask for permission and, I, yeah, it's, the hassle is the hassle on that.
Sharon, if you're talking, I'm you.
Okay, yeah, I just unmuted.
Okay.
I agree with what's being presented. Um, if we're gonna have a short agenda, one o'clock sounds great. Um, Friday, if we're gonna go later, then I guess that's where the hassle begins because there are times when, uh, I mean, the road between here and Farmington, there are certain sections that are treacherous. And if the, if we'd be okay to spend another night, I wouldn't mind going as long as possible on Friday. But I'd like that to be considered because I'm like Patty and, and the rest of us who have to drive. I, it's, um, it's hard driving at night. And, um, so I'd like to have that consideration in making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before we go back around, this is what I'll say. Um, you know, when, when I looked at the agenda for tomorrow, I'm anticipating a two-hour meeting and that's with like extended conversation. And that's why I asked for this to be in one day, that we did work session. Or even, we even talked about doing the meeting first and then work session right after. Um, and that's why this conversation's here is because I was outvoted and that's why we did two days. And that's, the EC did decide. But I'm not thinking about this for myself. I'm not thinking about this for my own personal comfort. I am thinking about it for the public and for schools and for people coming to attend. And then having to be two days for our comfort, like a, an individual comfort, it just doesn't sit right with me. You know, when I, I think when I looked at it and I was like, i- if a school has to come or schools, if people actually wanna participate, having things on one day is better. Having an afternoon and then the next morning, the, we're, we're doing that for us, not for the public. Um, and I think there's a good blend of in-between, but I do have a concern. Like, I said, I thought our meeting, if we did just Friday, I think we'd be done by two and I was still outvoted. Um, which is fine, and that's why we, we did it like we did today. But that's where I do think, like, I have a, I, I do have a concern that we're doing things based off of what we would like to be comfortable versus what's better for the public, what's better for schools, what's better for stat, like, I, believe me, doing, like, at all of the, I have a personal life. I don't bring it into this commission. I do not bring my children, my life, my job into the work I do here. Um, so that's, that's my concern, is it feels a lot heavy, like, we're making adult-focused decisions and not school-focused decisions? And that is my concern. And I also think, when I think of trying to recruit someone to run after I decide not to, if I let them know that we've become so efficient, that we've gotten down, instead of having to come to Santa Fe for two days a month, that ever, that oftentimes you only have to come one day? I think I'm gonna get a higher quality candidate that has a bigger schedule around them that's gonna be more committed to being like, you know what? Yeah, I don't wanna go read a book by a river, uh, for the rest of my afternoon. Um, I don't, I think that is very, like, when I think about, like, if a school made decisions the way we're talking about it, they're not doing it kid-focused, they're doing it adult-focused. And that's just, I have a concern by that, so that's, that's all. I'm, I think if we can be efficient enough to do it in one day, I think we should do it in one day. Um, I do think we have, I understand that that changes how we've always done, how things have always been. Um, and that maybe that changes from how, like, I, don't make a, you know, I do think, I have to, I worry too when I try to make advan- advanced reservations to actually stay up here. I get really nervous because some of them, even with refundable, it's like you have to cancel a week before in order to get, like, some of them are just like, they don't even offer cancellation up to the day of. But also, I just don't book that hotel, I book a different one. I mean, so I, I think there's some discernment that also can happen in addition to it. So that's all. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to continue. I think that there's three people on EC for a reason. When two people say it, that's what, that's what goes and that's how it goes and I'm okay with that. Um, I don't see the point of having a, a, start at one on Thursday and then come from nine to 10 tomorrow. I think that's extremely rude to all the other commissioners who aren't staying up and have to drive longer than the actual meetings are. Um, so I think, if I think about it commissioner-wise, there's 10 commissioners. Everyone, if we do it to try to make every single one of us comfortable, I mean, someone's getting, um, someone's going to be uncomfortable at any time. So for me, I think of what's best for the public, what's best for schools, what's best for people attending. And that's where I, that's kinda where I stand on it. I think, I can't remember which one of you, raise your hand first. I think KT and then Sam.
The only thing that I wanted to kinda just maybe play a little bit of devil's advocate for the public is that, you know, having it to where they know every month, besides this one change that we've talked about for next year in June, that every month, the work session is on Thursday and the meeting is on Friday, that it's a given that we're going to be meeting.
Don't you think it's better when you have something taken away? Now I don't have to go two days? They're gonna have the Friday, that, we are still doing it on a day they're expecting. Now I don't have to do two days, now I only have to do one?
They might have to be sitting on the meeting much longer than they anticipated on Friday.
Why would they think that, though? That's what I'm saying, we would only do it if the meeting's going to end at a reasonable time anyway.
To me, it's hard to predict how long a meeting is gonna last. If it's, you just never know who's gonna have a Columbo moment, uh, as Steve likes to say.
We can also be more cautious about how long we spend talking. Commissioner Obenchain?
So, um, I, I know in my short time that we've had a couple of work sessions canceled and we've just met on Friday. What was, was that an EC conversation that decided that? Okay, so in that sense, um.
But I will say it's been contentious every time.
Okay, so it's, so in terms of trying to manage the time and the workload, that's just the three of you saying, okay, this is what we think, this will take this amount of time. Um, I'm, I'm very comfortable with efficiency and not having to come up for two hours and then go back home and then come up again the next day. I get it and I'm, I, you know, I ran for this for a reason and I will do what is, you know, what is required. But I do think that, um, there are times when we, um, can self-regulate and determine, you know what? Maybe I don't need to have that third point made about the same topic. Um, and so those are the things that I, I know are just tough to juggle. And as a chair, it's very hard to rein that in sometimes. But I, I would advocate for efficiency over, we have to come every Thursday, Friday. So I just, I just feel like that's smart.
So for me, I don't have an issue with canceling Thursdays. I have a, I have a concern about extending Fridays, but I'm less concerned if, you know, we haven't always had a work session. And if I, I mean, I take my, this calendar and I give it to them and I'm booked out for the year with the, and they have, they, because I have a good relationship with them, I can probably call them on Tuesday and say, you know, I don't, but I know well enough in advance that we're not gonna meet. I don't have a problem with not meeting Thursdays. My concern is, and I agree, I think if a school leader has to be on for eight hours for a meeting, that's tough at times. But I just wanna make it clear, I have never objected to not meeting on a Thursday if we don't have to.
I don't think there, that didn't feel like it's gonna be helpful based off of the conversations we've been having in EC. Um, I, so I don't know. I don't know the resolution to this, to be honest.
So, I mean, right now, there, right, I know, that's what I was gonna say, is right now, there's an.
Just keep me from what we're doing.
It's an EC issue, I think, and then, um, you guys decide.
Good. All right, we're going to go to our faulty subcommittee updates. Everyone be patient and kind because we do not have this in place yet, but, and actually, I think for most of these, I don't think a lot met because we had such a short time period between the last two. So I think this will be fast for that reason, too. All right, um, actually, I, were there any subcommittees that did meet? I didn't meet in any subcommittee. Policy, that's right, policy, after the last one, that's good. Uh, charter performance, we didn't meet, budget did not meet, so policy.
Okay, and this is, this is exactly, I think, what.
Would you like us to update, Steve? We didn't meet.
You just, you know, okay, you didn't meet, but I mean, the things here, I'm looking at the, like, um, the record of performance dashboard. What are the things, is, has there been progress? Um, I know you just said you didn't meet. Forget it, it's fine.
Oh, no.
Policy.
I was afraid you were gonna say that. Um, so we did meet and we've talked about a number of things and I'm, I'm just gonna let you look at what's spending. Um, the other things we've already done, so you don't need to look at that. Um, we have looked at the record of performance process and determined were, um, intervention steps are necessary when schools reach a certain level? Um, I don't know how in-depth I can even go at this point unless I reference back to another document. Um, but the idea is basically that we wanna make sure that we're consistent when, um, issues come forward. If it's non-corrected, those, all those levels of performance and then what are the actions that we may take as a result of them moving up that intervention ladder? Um, the big thing is we've been talking about, and you people on the committee, I'm gonna refresh my memory, but we, there was something that triggered a conversation around mergers, um, merging. Oh, yeah, that was the Deloris Weptah and, um, Alma and sharing the same space and the, an issue of the lease running out on Deloris Weptah and not being able to, um, cohabitate that space with Alma. And so the conversation was, is there a possibility that, um, that they could consider a merger of the two schools? There's also two other schools that I believe are talking about it. Um, I think the, the issue came up because Deloris Weptah is gonna have to make a decision about their existence if the cohabitation does not work out, which it sounds like it's not. And so the question that we're considering is what, um, what would mergers, what would mergers look like? Um, what are some, go ahead, if you wanna add to that?
Yeah, just real quick, the, the whole thing was, we don't have a policy for mergers and there are all different types of mergers. And so we, we wanna have some consistency within the, with making a policy not for one specific situation or another specific situation, but considering any situation where a merger might occur. So that's where we're at.
Correct, and so. Correct. And so what the, the, the process that we're going to follow now is ask the CSD, um, heads up CSD, but we're going to ask the CSD to look into some what are best practices around mergers nationally, um, and then potentially draft a policy for, um, mergers in, for PEC schools.
To add that even though the situation was the impetus for the conversation, the policy is not going to be crafted to fit any schools in particular, that it is possible that the schools that we've even referenced may not qualify based on the recommendations that there, that have been created for what a good merger would look like. Yeah.
And I think the other thing though was that there was a bit of, um, a bit of a time crunch in the sense of, um, Delores Suetta will need to make a decision and are we going to be prepared to have merger conversations with them before they have their next, um, decision-making point?
My question is with that specific one, doesn't, uh, an external agency have a lot more to do with? I mean, the, the policy of PSFA and how they do lease reimbursement is much more going to hinge that transaction than our policy. Am I correct? So, so for me, I think that, I think that what you're saying is we need to have a policy, but in that specific instance, it's, it's stuff that's outside of our control.
And, and we did have conversations about that. Um, the issue I think right now is not so much with PSFA lease reimbursement, but with Las Cruces Public Schools not allowing them to lease that portion of the building. So, um, I know PSFA is an issue, but I don't know necessarily, we were discussing that as much as we were talking about Las Cruces Public Schools saying, you are not going to be able to cohabitate.
And really quick, because this, this, uh, topic was brought to the subcommittee before we started this intro process. Um, this was one of the things that as an EC, we talked about it and we're like, oh, this seems urgent, send it. We won't do that in the future. This would be something that, you know, so I think really quick before we move forward, I want to make sure there's a consensus from the rest of the commissioners that looking at a merger policy is beneficial. Making sure you want the policy subcommittee to go ahead and continue that and bring back a recommendation of what the policy looks like. It will not be specific to any kind of lease or any, you know, it's really just if any two schools in the world, in our world, want to do a merger, what would it look like? So that's what the policy subcommittee would like to consider. So really quick, while we're all here, if anyone doesn't want that, if you're, if you feel like there's no merit in that, that we should not do that, speak your mind now. Otherwise we'll go ahead and have policy subcommittee create a recommendation.
No, I like the idea, but, um, I guess it would seem to me that, that when CSD would consider when they're doing any research on this is the biggest obstacles would be board governance. If they're merging, they're merging. Uh, board governance and administration. Who's going to be the top dog? I mean, I would, I look at the two schools that are considering this right now, I can't imagine the one head administrator would get anything. He's giving away any power, shows responsibility or whatever. So that would be perhaps something that would be very challenging, I would think for, for CSD to come up with.
Commissioner Ingham?
It just, would an option there be say, uh, no, we don't like mergers? And, and I guess that, that's what I think should be brought to that policy.
Right. So I think, I think the next step in, and this is in general for any of these topics as they start coming through, right? The policy, or the policy subcommittee now will create this, a recommendation, right? Go through the process, create something. If it comes back and the commission's like, we hate this, nah, it can stop. It literally can stop. It does not have to go anywhere. It also can be revised by the commission, right? Like the, the subcommittee proposes something, there's six other, well, right now, five other people, right? So you're going to take that look at it. But ideally now it's more coherent, it's been thought out, it's been researched, it's been, you know, discussed with CSD, it's been looked at through legal, you're getting a coherent proposal. So make change it, make suggestion, change, you know, like bring your brain into it at that point and it still can be modified and changed, which is why we have the two month rule in our rule of process, right? Is that it can introduce one month, it's not going to get voted on that month. That, that is so that it can get changed. So that the public can input, give input as well and it gets changed. So just to help clarify, that's, once again, that's where I'm going to go with trying to formalize what that looks like for everyone.
So, um, Sam, I want the policy committee on this particular issue to also take into account if we come up with a decision as a commission, no, we're not approving this merger. First thing I think of is lawsuit because people just love to come after us when we say no. So I just want you guys to dig into how do we insulate ourselves, uh, with whatever decision we make, especially if it's not to approve a merger.
So, uh, I mean, a lot of, a lot of policy stuff is going to have to happen. Prior to this merger, right? It's just going to be probably a fairly extended process. So we, I don't know if we, we're going to have a policy in place prior to this.
This particular one?
This particular one.
We, we talked about, yeah.
So, right. So my, my, my thought is, is the last 20 years, how many mergers have there been? So, so is it something that the policy committee needs to, if, if we're going to miss this one? 20 years, is this something that we'll spend time and effort to try to define? I don't know.
Yes, but not quick. We don't need to do it, you know, we don't need to do it with weekly meetings. We don't need to do emergencies, that, you know, we have till, basically how we, you know, our rule says when we create stuff like this, it doesn't go into effect in the school year we created in, right? It goes into effect July 1 of the following fiscal. So we don't have to do, we can do it thorough, researched, well thought out with public input. We can get stakeholders in, like, we don't have to do it fast. That's what's great.
Yeah.
But I think this, this exposed a gap.
Okay.
Exposed a gap.
All right.
Commissioner Gibson, it was Southwest Primary and Southwest Intermediate merged to form Southwest Preparatory.
Those people in my time, I always thought they were always separate.
Well, the, 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 the primary school and the intermediate school were separate and then, and then now they're Southwest Prep, then they became Southwest Preparatory. Pardon?
They have, they have one contract?
We made them get rid of the separate intermediate because they were double dipping on small school size.
So the intermediate school closed.
They had the, so they had a school that was primary and middle intermediate.
Right.
And then they had a separate.
Secondary school. Yes.
No, they had a separate intermediate.
Right.
We made them get rid of, they could keep the primary intermediate that they had, they had to get rid of the separate middle school that they had.
That's okay. If, if y'all don't mind, that's okay. If y'all don't mind, since it's not pertinent to what we're talking about, we'll, we'll take it offline. But.
So one thing that may be pertinent is when does, is it the, the next school year that, um, Alma and Delores, not right now?
Not, we're not.
Who's asking a question?
I, I'm telling you, we are not talking, we, we didn't talk about that with the policy subcommittee. It's been an offline conversation with a certain, with a specific commission.
Steve, that's, that's pretty much my understanding. This is like the simplest question ever. Does the laws have to be out August 1st or? I mean, how?
Korea.
I don't understand.
I'm sorry, but it's inappropriate for you to speak to me like that. Number two.
Speaking in general, like the idea of not being able to ask a question.
No one said you could ask a question, but for you to expect to have a response of something that's very school-specific and it, it's not pertinent to this.
Fine.
Okay.
All right, moving on with the report out. Um, so those are, um, as you can see, if you're looking at that document, um, Ms. Barnes has updated with those issues. Um, we also have been talking about, um, re- reviewing existing expanding protocols, the expansion idea of, um, schools, um, with the idea of having a metric that would show that they're ready to expand. So looking at what are the indicators that would say, um, a school is ready to expand. And there are, I can't remember, you guys can help me remember who, who put that together?
Bellwether. Yeah.
So, yeah, so we've already been talking about the put together protocols.
Oh, we started. So they have protocols, but then we talked in the policy subcommittee about instead of going to Bellwether, going to, um, Director Russell and her team and having them take a look at it with their expertise instead of, I, we can get the information from Bellwether, but we're thinking we could maybe do it in-house with the expertise that we have through Dr. Russell. Uh, KT.
So, uh, with the expansion, are we talking about like grade level expansion?
And enrollment cap increases.
Okay, gotcha. So not like, um, uh, and I don't like to name schools, but uh, not like an Explore Academy wanting to open up a new location or is that also included in the?
I would say that could potentially be it as well. I think there's actually, and this is why, once again, strategic plan is also like, this shows the gaps in not having a strategic plan. Cause there's also, I think there's multiple layers that all combined with that idea. That's one, that's one that does it. Um, when we think of replication, we don't have a replication model process. It could be used for that. It can be used, I mean, there's also, uh, we have the indicators of success that it kind of overlaps as well. So we're trying to figure out how that framework doesn't do this with the work we're doing, but instead like overlaps. Yeah, I think like we're finding all these holes of things that schools are trying to do or have the option to do, but we don't have the process on what it looks like. Or we have a process, but it's very low bar.
So, uh, just thinking about this, are there different metrics being considered for those different criteria?
That's what we're trying to not do, is try to get it to where it's all the same metrics. Like if, if we have an idea of what's a successful school looks like to the PEC, how can we apply that to all the various pieces? The expansion, replication, adding, adding grade levels. Uh, you know, like if we have a framework, uh, because that's what the framework is, is what does a successful school look like? And it's a bunch of indicators that they've done all this research on. So what can, if we can, if we do look at that framework and we adopt it, how can we apply it across multiple metrics instead of it being a different metric for every little thing?
Okay.
Cause it definitely has been coming up. But there's all these different pieces that need.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've seen a lot of different things over the past few years that, uh,
Weird when we're doing them.
It's hard for us to, I mean, there's probably some things that we didn't foresee down the road that have happened. And it would have been nice to have just been able to quantify that upfront and been like, okay, yeah, probably not the best idea or, right? Yeah.
So, so I do think, keep that in mind as we keep, as we do that, because I do think those are the gaps we're trying to fill and make more robust in that, the intention.
All right. Anything else on the expansion conversation? All right. So do, do we have two? Oh, I'm sorry. Wondering, does accepting new district schools to our, our deal, does that, is that germane to that? Cause it seems like, I, I, I'm going to say that has been an issue for me that we kind of, we didn't have a policy. We get confronted with a, a, a situation that's urgent and then we're stuck with either saying yes or no and, and having very little to judge on. And, and I think that's where I, I felt the most uneasy.
I, that's a great, that is a great connection. Add that to our list, Julie. That's actually a great one.
Cause you'd have, yeah, I think you'd have to look at the legal implications as for us to be able to say, no, you can't apply to us. Well, they can apply, but we don't have to say yes. Correct. Yeah. 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 And I think it's fairly fair to schools to know what their chances are ahead of time instead of saying, oh, if I had, if I had known this was the bar, then we never would have applied.
I think we have enough consensus to go ahead and add it to the, to the.
Is it a legislative thing that if they apply to one, like they have to leave their district if they want to apply to us? And if we say no, they have no. So that, that seems so unfair.
Very fair.
Very fair. I mean, if they just, I mean, they're just rolling the dice with whether or not their charter is going to exist.
Even with their current.
Even with, you know, you can't.
Cause I think in some of the schools that we've taken on, okay.
All right.
I was just gonna say, I think we've had conversations in the subcommittee about not so much that this is the, you know, you're rolling the dice, but we're going to show you what indicators look like that would lead to a successful expansion, not, um, you know, roll the dice and if you get it, you get it. Right. It's more like we're going, this is what we're using to determine that your expansion is, um, tenable. All right, do we have two? Um, someone's going to have to help me with, I'm not sure exactly when the conversation came up. But it sounds like we need to, we're looking at creating a policy that all PEC charters will follow. Yeah, please.
So right now there is a policy. It is, um, it is a CSD policy. I think there's a lot of consensus by this commission that they like it, but it's the kind of thing that actually should be in a rule. We had talked about, it's one of those areas where you overlap because there are district schools that also have to have lottery. And so the conversation is that's something that we should at least ask the PED if they want to pursue that with us, but if not, we should put that in rule. So it, it came up as a topic. Again, that was one of the ones that was on my list of things that, that commissioners had raised that we needed to move, that, that there was conversation to move forward on.
It's probably similar to the best practices policy. I know we've had conversations about expedited renewal and we're continuing to have conversations about that. I'm not sure, maybe you can help me with the parenthetical sentence there?
So, um, you guys have raised several times that like, uh, that, um, the, uh, a strategic plan can help find where there are gaps. And this came up with the indicators of success that all of a sudden it became clear to me that actually you need and you have and are doing a national best practice policy. So that was drafted that way. We put in there the, um, September, um, uh, assurance form that the schools have been doing certain things. One of them added to the assurance form was the indicators of success, um, section, which is section three. That actually has gone back to the indicators of success, um, uh, subcommittee. Two other things in my mind fit in that policy. One is the expedited renewal process, which again is being finalized in another thing, but the policy subcommittee should look at a section of that policy. And then last year, this commission did grants in part to give back the 2%. And that should just put in, be put in the policy so that it's clear. Um, and so there's certain component parts of this policy that I think the policy subcommittee is going to look at. But the substance is being created in a couple of different subcommittees. So just you know, the, the indicators of success subcommittee came up with what they wanted to propose to you. And then it got put into a policy that was a little bit more expanded. So these are the two parts, um, when the expedited renewal is finished and, and the REC grant process and actually, um, uh, Director Russell has, um, is wanting to be the drafter of those. So that those kind of come out the way that we want them. But so much of what you talked about today is gonna be great to have you have a strategic plan because I think those of us that staff you will be able to say, oh, this can go there or this, how about this and that can go here and we can help you better with this. That happened to me, for example, on that indicators of success. When that subcommittee asked me to draft, I was like, oh, it was like a light bulb came on. There's a much better way. Those, that broader section came to the. it was like a light bulb came on. There's a much better way. Those, that broader section came to the policy subcommittee.
And then the rest, the rest of the things that we have not yet discussed, but they're on our list.
Thank you. Legislative, did you all meet? Yeah, the P E C actually, I mean, we reviewed them all and sent them to the secretary. I have a update tomorrow on my chair report.
Have not met since I gave the report last month.
Okay. Uh, board awards did not meet. Nope. And indicators of success, we did not meet. All right. Um, L E S C update.
Uh, next week in Las Vegas, uh, Friday is the item on the L E F C agenda for a discussion on the support that are given to charter schools across authorizers and how they utilize the 2% to help support the school, the differences between authorizers.
All right, L F C, L F C did meet, not, uh, last month. Um, and there was one item that was the, um, there was a Martinez-Yasi lawsuit update that the, um, L E S C had a report, um, L F C had a report and the secretary presented. Um, I mean, nothing on it would be surprising to any of you. It's basically that a lot of money has increased and no outcomes have increased at all. Um, so they actually, you could see the, the graphs. It was money, 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 money and literally outcomes. Um, so it's very, that's what L F C was focused on was the frustration of increased money. And the amount is staggering. I mean, it really is staggering how much more money is in schools at the board level. Um, and that there just isn't outcomes to show. Uh, one, I already told you that they did, that they talked about, but they talked about it at this L F C meeting as well, that, um, the PED hired, um, the Los Alamos, uh, foundation and West Ed to help support, um, putting together a response to the court, um, coming up. Um, and that's basically, there really wasn't any, I wish I could tell you there was something that you wouldn't have expected. Um, but there wasn't, but they are looking, I mean, L F C was intently looking at, and I mean, obviously the financial aspect of it. L E S C did present a lot of the things that they've been doing, especially since 2022, is really where they like targeted and have talked about the legislation that they've been passing. But once again, L F C's report was that there's been no outcomes, um, increase since. So that was fascinating and it is available on recording if you want to go watch it. It's about four hours of reporting. Um, that was the only item on L F C that had anything to do with education.
I have a question about that. Are they bringing up for future agenda, the fact all of these cuts that states all over are going to experience on the federal level and how we're going to make all of that up?
I was not in the.
No, but is, um, is that something that's there looking to do next month or?
Not listed the agenda.
I mean, one would think they'd be like red flagging that and because, um.
If I see anything, I'll bring it up and report.
Well, and they, I mean, we have 21 billion or who knows, it's always a different number, but in the, if, if there was ever an emergency, now is it?
They didn't talk about that. All right. Commissioner Klosa Shilich, the New Mexico Indian Education Advisory Council.
Okay, thank you. We met on the ninth. And on the ninth, I had questions about some of the information regarding, what Indian education was doing with, with, with schools. And so I was asking about, um, charter schools. And a lot, the information, I guess they were talking about was between government to government, what happened at their government to government, um, conference. And, um, you know, the past few meetings, I haven't been able to, I guess, share a lot of, I mean, give a lot of input into the meeting and I finally found out why. Um, there was one meeting I was a part of and, and I was told that I really need to register as a guest. And, and that's happened like two times. So finally, this meeting, I asked what I had to do to become a part of the many, meeting and participate for the public education as a public education commissioner. And it got silent and I think they finally realized that I was legitimate in being a participant of the meeting. Um, and so they pulled up their list and they still had Commissioner Armijo listed. And we had, um, when I, when I went on board, part of what we did was we let, I let the committee know that I was taking the place of, um, Commissioner Armijo. And so, you know, they've had like, this is maybe about the third change they've had since I've been on. And so we finally got that taken care of. Um, and I guess that, that was basically why, um, a lot of my information wasn't being recognized or listened to was because, um, I wasn't listed as a legit participant. So that was the biggie out of our last, our, our meeting on the ninth was that I'm finally on as a, as representing P E C to that meeting. And I don't know what happened or what was going on that it didn't occur. Well, I think the information just wasn't carried to the next new administration. So that was the biggie. So I hope the next meet, we did, we're not meeting July, although we did meet on the ninth, we're not meeting our regular meeting time and we'll be meeting in August. So now that that's been taken care of, I can, um, I guess, participate a little bit better now that they understand I am a rep from P E C.
Thank you for advocating for that. Thank you for advocating for that, Commissioner Klosa Shilich.
Okay.
Um, great. Anything else for that? All right. Uh, P S C O C, do we, was our, our agenda item, was that the top, or you got more?
I have a lot more.
Let's go.
But, okay, so, so as far as the meeting goes that we had yesterday, it was, um, it was consequential. There's, like we discussed before, there's a lot going on and a lot of, um, situations that are pretty rough and, and not just with ours, but the adequacy standards that we were talking about. We had to table one item because it's become so controversial and because so many school districts are coming back with re, re, uh, reworked, uh, projects because of the square foot calculator and all that. It's a very complicated mess. And so, um, as far as that goes, the meeting goes, I think it's not too much for, for our committee. Um, I will say that I am addressing these other issues that are, uh, that are on this piece of paper here. Um, and, and I, I do say, I, 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 I have a kind of radical position on this. And I think that I need to figure out, and, and what I was going to ask you when you were talking about the whole subcommittee deal. How do I interact with my subcommittee? How do I get a thing on the agenda? Because when I asked to put it on, I was denied. And so, okay, so I asked to have the charter school members come out and testify about the.
To your, to the subcommittee for?
No, to my, to the main committee.
Okay.
Okay. And that's when Joe denied me. Okay, so then I need to know how, what, because we have two subcommittees, how that interaction happens. And maybe I should be interjecting my request to the subcommittee rather than the committee. It's a very difficult thing for me to manage. It's, it is very much, our agenda is set for our subcommittee. I don't, I just have to react to what, what's there. I, I'm uncomfortable with that. I'm becoming more uncomfortable with that. I really want to be able to have, um, I want to address the committee and, and, or at least have topics brought up. And what we're talking about where we have a fairly, um, transparent process for doing that, I don't think we do in that situation. And so I could use some education as far as the structure of a committee and, or, or, uh, yeah, committee. Um, the things that I have that are, I believe there are really significant barriers for charter schools to access the, um, capital outlay funding that is distributed by P S C O C. We have schools that are absolutely appropriate for it and they can't do it. And so do I believe there's supposed to, there's going to need to be a legislative fix? Yes. But there's two items on that beside, there's one that is going to require some. The other one is, I don't think they're following their own statute because when I read the statute, it is pretty charter friendly and it, and it requires the districts to, to provide for the capital needs of charter schools within their district. And it doesn't distinguish between state or district charter schools. It, the, the capital master plans, I found out yesterday, not public, even though there was one public one on, I read the one for Los Lunas for, for, because of the pertinence of that deal. Um, and it was long and lengthy and it did not address the charter school's needs. Okay, at all. And so I feel like they're not, they're, they're not following their own statute. And so I think that I can address with P S F A and, and really start demanding that show me when you come up with a project that you've considered anything about the charter, the capital needs of that charter school. I don't know how that's going to affect anything because they can say, we, we addressed it, we're not going to do it or something like that. I don't know. That, but at least they need to, to be, uh, that needs to be addressed. And so I'm going to push on that. In the end though, the real kicker is charter schools really need to be in a different bucket. They cannot, they cannot have the same requirements that districts have because they have, they don't have bonding capacity. So the, the reality is, I think in our legislative requests and, and what we got, I, I think we're going to have to push for that. And I don't know if that can be done within the committee structure or if it has to be brought to the, to get a legislative fix. They, I think P S F A would say, oh, no, we can't do, we can't, it's, it's, it's the statute. We, we are tasked with following the statute. Well, then follow the statute first thing. I mean, that's for me, that's, I, I can point out where they're not. But then the statute is clearly discriminatory, then what are we going to do about it? I mean, are we really wait for a lawsuit? Because honestly, to me, it's time. I mean, the Zuni lawsuit made that, that crystal clear that their, their, the committee has to address education needs equitably across the state and they're not. And so do you want it, or do you want to address it? And so I'm not sure how to go about that, but I am, I am equally as adamant that that needs to be addressed. And so I would use any input I could get. Thank you. Sorry. I knew I was gonna.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Manus?
So, uh, we just had our annual board retreat earlier this week. One of the key things that, um, was good for us for, uh, P E C is our three charters were approved to, you know, join NIPSA as far as the benefits and risk. It's kind of a standard procedure, but, uh, one that we have to do before they open. So, uh, their schools are covered, uh, underneath NIPSA. And then the other thing that was discussed was the legislative appropriation. Um, NIPSA got about a hundred million from the legislature approximately uh, to cover a lot of, a lot of the large losses that we have in the, uh, risk, uh, side as well as, uh, benefits premiums having increased. Uh, one of the other things that's been discussed is, uh, and probably state employees are aware of this more than anybody, is the, uh, state covering 80% of their, uh, benefits. Uh, NIPSA is trying to push where all school districts, um, all schools in general are going to be covering the 80% because it's getting to the point where, uh, right for the state, and now they're trying to push it to, uh, K through 12. And then they had mentioned, um, that that was going to be kind of moving to higher ed after K through 12. So it seems like the, the push is that while premiums may be going up a lot, that's just common across the, the industry, um, that the, who's going to have to pay for the brunt of that is going to be the schools or the school districts rather than the employees of the schools and school districts. So that's one thing that they're pushing. And, um, the other thing that I had mentioned, and this kind of relates back to, uh, the National Charter School Conference, as I had mentioned to the CEO of NIPSA. Um, I attended a presentation on, on benefits at National Charter School Conference where they were, they being, um, this team that presented, um, they were presenting an, an option for a national, uh, benefits fund specific for charter schools. Don't know kind of how that is gonna play out, right? They, they had some information, but it's kind of like right now it's all, uh, conceptual. There's not a lot of concrete information. They're essentially, the schools themselves can't, uh, apply to be in this benefit. It has to be some larger entity that's applying on their behalf. And so, um, the CEO said, yeah, give me that information and we'll look and see if that's something that NIPSA can maybe, uh, become a part of. That way our charter schools, if it ends up being that they can get at a, at a lower cost, great. You know, that's what they're, that's what they're looking at. So, um, attending that presentation at National Charter School Conference and talking to them after, it seemed kind of like they were being somewhat selective, uh, in the sense that, yeah, not everybody's gonna qualify for this. Right? So I don't know how all that's going to work, um, but it's at least worth, uh, pursuing. So the last thing that maybe some kind of interesting, uh, Seagull is one of our, uh, third-party vendors. Um, and they presented a lot of information to us about, uh, and on the benefits side about individuals, chronic illnesses, things like that. And, uh, the huge increase of our costs have been due to G L P ones, uh, think Ozempic, um, for obesity that those, um, that's like skyrocketed by like 200%, like a crazy number. And, um, the cost is incurred by the plan, right? So that means that overall, and if you, we think of insurance in general, the majority of those who are like paying, right, are the ones who actually aren't using the benefits. It's a very small percentage who are actually having to use those benefits, right? It's like, I think in our case, NIPSA's case, it's like, um, 60 to 70% of the base are paying for this 10% here. And that's typical of insurance, right? Not something different than NIPSA. But it's very, uh, interesting in the sense that in New Mexico, the reason, a lot of the reason why we're seeing these, um, illnesses get to the point where they're so costly is because lack of going to the, the doctor, right? And there was a lot of stats, New Mexico compared to the national norm. And it's so interesting, like New Mexico, uh, going to get your preventative checkups, 20%, national norm, 80%. So shocking the difference. And it's like, can understand the NIPSA pop, this is NIPSA population, not just New Mexico population. And we can think about as educators, right, during the day, we're so busy, right? You have everything going on, can't, don't really feel like we can take off, can't really feel like we can put it in the schedule, have kids, right? So the, those things can be there, but as we are thinking about that, we also have to make time for our health because it compounds into much, much worse things in the future. And so that was like the stats, I was like, wow. What NIPSA population is doing versus. What NIPSA population is doing versus general, especially for preventives? And most of the things were preventative diseases, preventative issues, that if they had been caught much earlier, they wouldn't have gotten to the point where they're at now. So just food for thought, especially commissioners here, anybody listening to maybe go get those preventative screenings. That could, that could help.
Secretary Kria?
Nothing to report. Talk to Joe this month and see what they have, if anything, for the upcoming legislature. So this is a 30. Anything that goes on has to be, basically it's the governor's call, right? She has to approve it. Is that the way 30 days work? So the odds of her having anything to partner up with them on is slim to none. But I'll make sure that I have more to report next month, talking with Joe.
Commissioner Taylor, Taylor, your commission?
I would like to report that our next meeting is October 3rd.
All right. The commissioners who went to the charter school conference, you can give your high level, did you leave your notes? Hey, T, you talked a lot about the charter school conference, but do you want to start off with anything else other than what you already?
Yeah.
You talked about how that perfectly integrated in what you do.
I think just as a, the conference was good. One of the observations from this year compared to the last couple of years, it seemed like there were more vendors that were presenting on different topics, but it wasn't necessarily stated that it was going to be a vendor. It was kind of like slid in there slightly. And so I don't know, for me, I think that some of the presentations were less impactful because of that. Attended a presentation on mental health. That seems to be kind of like a trend in National Charter School Conference as well as, right? Mental health issues becoming more of a topic at the forefront. I say that because the general session, the second general session was about, you know, boys and men and how the, the issues with mental health, but also things that are occurring from an education standpoint, from a financial standpoint, there were a lot of different statistics that were presented. And I thought that was probably one of the best general sessions that they've had over the past couple of years because of the way that he presented his information. And it was very palatable to, to everybody in the room. Kind of makes you, I think, have a second look at, okay, as I'm approaching, because obviously it's mostly educators that are at the National Charter School Conference, how they might look at their classroom and how they might look at their students, even us state policymakers, right? One of the things they talked about is how different like males in the educator role and breaking that up by demographic as far as race. And how if we expect to see males as educators, then we need to be promoting more males in education, especially males of color. And so it was very interesting to have some of those stats and it wasn't just stats, but solutions, right? There's kind of like doom and gloom, but he had brought solutions. And then he has a book, of course, that details a lot of the stuff. But it was very, I think, eye-opening because you hear some of the stuff on mental health and the suicide numbers compared to females, to males, and even how it's changed. The suicide numbers for males have changed over the past 20 years. It's kind of staggering, staggering the changes. So it's definitely something I think as educators, but as policymakers to think about things even from the NIPSA side as far as like, we're doing the stop it. That's been kind of like a big push, but it's also legislatively that there has to be a a mechanism for reporting, right? That that's, they're now making, like, there's going to be a consequence. And I think we talked about in our meeting that it's a, it's a financial consequence if the, if the schools aren't doing it, then there's going to be some repercussion. NIPSA is promoting the stop it. There's other solutions, like they had mentioned, like Sandy Hook. They have a whole like app that they can have the say something, do something type thing. But with stop it, it's more than just like particularly violence, right? It could be that if you're struggling with mental health, you can have that anonymous conversation. So thinking about those things really can, I think, start to, we're trying to address it. Not necessarily saying that it's going to be addressed or going to be fixed, but I really appreciated that the keynote speaker and learning about some of those stats and how that's, that can impact lots of areas of education. So I thought it was good overall, good trip and look forward to potentially going next year.
Okay. So the reason I kind of panicked, I got kind of overwhelmed. I went to so many sessions and all of them really focused on finance is what I've taken as my thing. So there was a lot of opportunities there. I did meet with, afterwards, a lady from Bellwether who I talked to after the deal. I did have a Zoom conference with her associate day before yesterday, which was, I mean, they have a lot, but what they're basically telling me is that these, these policy issues, because I brought up my issues with them, that's, it's paramount on my mind. And so they, Jim Griffin and Jim Gunner are the two people across the country that we really need to be talking to with this. So I'm going to, I'm going to be continuing to talk to them. And Jim Griffin had me come, real interesting, had me come. He wanted me to be a part of his deal that he had for rural charter schools as a homeroom deal. And so I went, the first day, Jim didn't make it. And so we, we had a really good impromptu just meeting with people. Okay? And we talked about some of the situations, across the country, how this goes. And, and then the next day Jim came and facilitated and was, we, I think, we are really impacted by that 10%. And I don't think that's generally a rule across the country or has, I don't know that any other state has that restriction. But it is certainly an impactful restriction. And so I guess for me, again, it just gave me more impetus to say we need to address these, these things. So when we, when we talk about what our strategic plan for a long term is, I think that's clearly an issue that we need to, to talk about because it it's, it's a portion of our statute that is clearly holding back the charter movement in those areas. And, and I think that there, there are aspects of the charter movement that are so impactful to education that that has to be, we have to take that the next step. We have to get that to be impacting public education in general. And, and so it shouldn't, we got to get over this barrier of being us and them. We got to find a way to, and my, my crazy idea is what, what about a district that just would want to change their mandate from being a traditional district to being a chartered district? I mean, we have, we have schools or districts with 120 kids that we just built a 150 or $50 million school for 120 kids. Wouldn't that, I mean, how, I'm thinking out of the box, but how different would it be? What would the, what would the difference be? I mean, is it the duly elected board? I mean, because a district has a elected board. Where a charter school has a volunteer board. Is that insurmountable? I don't think it is. I mean, there's a lot of things here that if we look at it, why, why are we so, it's got to be this. Can't we take some of the mechanisms that we find that are accountability and the, two things for me. Accountability and family engagement are the two big things that make charter schools perform a lot better. And if we could bring that into the traditional world, I think that, I guess I'm pie in the sky. I just think that that's where we need to be trying to go. So anyway, got up on a bandwagon, I mean, the soapbox again. Apologize. Thank you.
I actually, I think my sessions were accountability and family engagement. That's like basically all of mine, what they were. And a lot of it, like I really tried to go to as many sessions that were about alternative schools accountability. Because I do think that's becoming more talked about in the national sector is, okay, we're not going to keep applying the same accountability standards to every single charter school. It just doesn't make sense. So how to do that? And I know when we start, when we, I think for our commission, I think of both the option three schools. And like, how do we know that that's rigorous? Like when we're negotiating what a, a option three school looks like? Is it valid? Is it rigorous? Is it right? Is it like, what are those things? So that's, that was really my intention of doing it. The one thing I will say, we're, we're obviously ahead of a lot of the, even the people presenting. But there were some, they're definitely, I think we're on the right track. There are some concrete examples, though, that were given of how different schools are measuring things quantitatively that we might think is qualitative. There's also a bank, which I'll remember to send, to probably to Bridget M S E just to remind them. But, and it's actually the A Game Data Dashboard now has a bank of alternative model school or mission goal questions or goals that are like funky, like they're just kind of out there, they're different, they're unique, but they've quantified them. And they've actually started creating a whole bank of them as they've been working with schools. So I have the website to be able to like look at those and see what's already kind of being done. I mean, it's not exactly what we're doing, but I think it's very, it's like that bank of questions, I think, could be really helpful to a school, especially the mission goal alignment. I think mission goals are, sometimes they're really like good and the, the schools are like on it. And sometimes they're not really innovative. They're not really thinking outside the box. They're not like, they're kind of basic. So kind of like when we're elevating mission goals and as we're doing option three schools, other, other places are doing them as well. And they're creating a bank of them, which I thought was really cool. And then one of the coolest things, I just want, if anyone wants to look at like a real, I went to a, my favorite session that I went to was a session given by a group called Memphis Lift. They have a website, you can go look at them. It is so cool. And it's basically a parent advocacy organization, started very grassroots in Memphis about 10 years ago. Now there's a whole, I mean, I don't want to, I don't know other way to call them besides a posse. I think they'd be very happy to be known as that. They wear orange shirts. So those of you who were at the conference, you probably saw them. They like walk together all in orange shirts. And this group, basically they, they, and they, they started by focusing on KIPP school, on charter schools. There was one mom, actually she was a grandma, who was pissed at this KIPP school. Well, at first that Memphis didn't allow KIPP schools to come. So she fought against the school board to start. Then when KIPP came, they weren't doing what she thought, what she thought the promise was. So she stood out in front of the sign, in front of the school with a sign for a whole school year, saying, this school is not serving your kids right. Yeah. Every day a, after school, she stood out in front of the school and they were like, can you please stop doing that? And she's like, no, I'm not going to. And so they actually, that was 10, 15 years ago. They've developed a much better relationship now, but she really started. And now they basically have it to where the community knows they can come. They can get information about assessments, about grading, about I E Ps, about 504s, like anything a family needs to know. Because they were very adamant that actually in education, they leave out families a lot. They talk in education jargon. They expect families to understand these letters that are being sent home and they don't. Families do not understand it. It's not that they don't care. It's that educators keep themselves on a pedestal and they talk down to families. And this advocacy group has really gone through lengths to be like, stop doing that. That's enough. Like you're not going to keep doing that to us. We do care and you're going to serve us. So one of the things that they, they, they actually, now they show up to every single governing board and school board meeting for anybody in their organization and they all wear their orange shirts. They go to I E P meetings with the families in their orange shirts. And as soon as they come into schools, as soon as they get there, the, and there were, there were several administrators, several people from Memphis, from the schools that are like, oh no, yeah, we behave for them. Like no, absolutely. Like as soon as they walk in, we're like, you better. And as soon as we know there's an I E P and we know Memphis Lift is going to be attending, there was a principal who's like, I go to the teacher. I'm like, you better have your ducks in a row. You better know exactly what you're talking about. You better have the data in front of you. You better know, because they're going to ask you. I just thought it was so impressive, so cool. It was amazing. And the one thing, there's a couple of things they said because they were very much talking from a family perspective. They did not care what the teachers thought. They did not care what principals thought. They don't care what the charter leaders say. And they actually said that they felt like there was a pervasive issue in education that schools want per pupil funding, not students. And they have really been advocating against that, that the work is hard. It's the hardest you're going to do. And that the pay that their, that their work is doing is graduation literacy and opportunity. It just was such a cool inspirational piece. And they have a great website. It was so, so powerful, really impressive. And it was just awesome to hear from the family perspective, you know? Like I think what families talk about and how they feel is so disconnected from how policymakers talk about it. It's, it is night and day. And I know that's basically, you know, what PCS and M has tried to show through like their surveys is how different our communities see charter schools than the way that the policymakers do. So just to reorient you back in that, go talk to some families. You know, if you want to get back to like the root of your why, if you want to remember like what we're here for, go talk to families because they're, they're pretty honest. You don't get the, you don't get the beating around the bush as much as when you go to the legislature. The families are pretty, it's pretty clear for families what, where they stand. So I thought that was a really cool one. And then there was definitely, yeah, I think I'll, I'll, I'll actually ask, I'll send the website with the data dashboard so that everyone can have access to it. And that way you can see it. I think there's a lot of good resources in there that we possibly could be utilizing a little bit more as well. Okay. That's all. We are adjourned for today.